Uh works cuz I've you know, I've been having these glitches but. I don't really know why I tried to, I don't know, I still had in the last session, but it was a little bit better. Can someone say something just to make sure I can see that the audio?
Hello.
Yes, okay, audio was also going in the recording.
Yeah, I'm here too, I'm here too.
Okay, good, thank you. Yes, very good. Okay, so today, of course, to you know, we're gonna finish up our studying for PCS one twenty-five. Um tomorrow at, it's at ten tomorrow, right? I don't actually even know when it is. I'm pretty sure it's at ten. Ten ten, we start?
Ten ten, ten ten sharp.
Okay, ten ten, ten ten sharp on D two L.
Seventy-five minutes.
On the common D two, I would labs and exams. Not the regular one.
Okay, thank you for telling me cuz I.
I broke it.
You broke it?
Fuck wait.
Okay, I'll wait a second, what, 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 the, the stream?
How do I, oh, there you go, I fixed it. Do you guys see Adam?
Nope, it's uh.
Nope, we see um, what is discussions, I can't even read.
Oh, okay, wait, uh, I gotta change it. To this. Now?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Wait, Adam, what chapter are you doing today?
We are gonna continue with chapter sixteen, um, and then, well, yeah, we're just gonna continue with chapter sixteen, there's, there's, that's the only other. Chapter, we finished fifteen, but we can do any questions that people have, of course, I'll um. I'll take in like chat questions that people have, so if you have a chapter fifteen question, you can just ask me and I'll do that. Every time I see a spot on my screen, I'm worried it's a dead pixel, so keep wiping my, keep wiping my screen, okay, we're good.
No, I did the same thing.
No, there's nothing, no dead pixel, okay, we're good. Um, so let's start out, I have two suggested problems that people asked me to do since yesterday, uh, let's start with. Let's start with. Um, if I can find it, this one. Okay, so it, it's, I looked at this question for a bit, had to stare at it a little bit to figure out what to do, but let's, let's read it together, so. Tension is maintained in the string as shown in this figure here, okay? The observed wave speed is thirty-six meters per second, so let's write that down, V equals thirty-six meters per second. Um, when the suspended mass, so M equals uh, three kilograms, okay? If the horizontal portion of string weighs that much, okay, the horizontal portion of string. Uh, is zero point zero one kilograms, and it says we disregard, disregard this portion. Um, how long does that horizontal part have to be? Okay, and we neglect that vertical part because it's, M is the mass here. So this is weird because we always consider string massless, right, or the rope to be massless, but it's actually not too bad, so. We only use one equation to solve this, and that's V equals the square root of uh, T over mu. Right, remember mu, right, mu is just the mass, mass of the string over the length of the string. Right, mass per length. Well, I can rearrange this for a length here, right, so I can say V squared equals. T over the mass of the string over, I'll just call it L for length. Right, so I can just say this is times L like that, right, and so still rearranging for L, we can say that. Uh, V squared at mass of the string over the tension is the length. What do we know? We know V, we know the mass of the string, we don't know the tension, but we're pretty much one step away. So this, the tension in the string is constant, uh, what's the uh, forces acting at this point here? It should be straight down. To find that is up, so there's two forces, there's the force of gravity and the force of tension, which I just call capital T. So if I do the sum of the forces in the Y direction, that's equal to zero cuz it's not moving presumably, yeah, not moving. Doesn't say anything, so assume it's not moving. Well, we know the tension minus the force of gravity equals zero. And that the tension equals the force of gravity, which is the mass of the block times G. So we can just put that in here, we know that V squared, mass of the string over mass of the block times G. Equals L. We know everything here, so this is going to be thirty-six squared. Times the mass of the string, which was zero point zero one over the mass of the block. She was three times nine point eight one. And our answer is. Better try with the actual calculator.
Zero point four four.
Okay, I'm gonna check still, but if I get that right, then. I will believe myself more. Thirty, uh, yeah, zero point four four is right, so there you go, length, length of the string is zero point four four, oops, that's not how you write forty-four, is it? Forty-four. So, yes, there's that. How's everybody with that question?
Waste everything. So we go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to do the full backup.
You go, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I just needed to see, yeah, there we go, yeah, I'm good.
Good.
Yeah, that was it.
And Pooja, who sent me the question?
I didn't send you the question, but I just wanted to ask, so is like a good rule of thumb, that whenever you have a. A string questions like use V plus the over mu, is that a good um, kind of a first step?
Yeah, if, if, if you can get any information about some sort of tension in the string, then yeah, that is, it is an equation that's useful. Right, but maybe they don't give you any kind of information about that, right, so then, then you wouldn't know, or if you don't know like mass and stuff like that, you, you wouldn't know. I guess more importantly, they give you some sort of mass of the thing moving, in that case is possible. Okay. Okay, let's try the next question that someone suggested, which was. This one here, and are they in the chat here?
But hey, where do you suggest questions?
You can just DM it to me.
Okay, might as well do that, thank you.
Those are the answers, okay, thank you, yeah, and so you just want, you just, do you want me to just do part, I may as well do the whole thing. But let's, yeah, I may as well do the whole thing, yeah. Um, so. They only asked me for one part, but I'll just do the whole thing here, okay, so the po- the position of a particle is given by that expression, where X is in meters and T is in seconds. Oh, someone's watching my video from yesterday. I hear it going through the speakers, okay. Okay, I think, I think we're good, um, determine, or maybe not from yesterday, but maybe two days ago, okay, determine the position of the particle at. That man, amount of seconds, okay, well, that's not bad, so we just say X equals four cosine three pi. Zero point two five plus pi, and this will just be some answer, so four cos, of course, this is easy, but let's just. Let's just warm up with it, so zero point two five plus pi. So I got X equals two root two, which is approximately equal to. Uh, two point eighty-three. Okay, two point eighty-three meters. Okay, let's try part B. Uh, sorry, that was, that was part A. Now let's try part B. Determine the frequency, the period, the amplitude, and the phase constant, okay, well, the period, uh, the, the amplitude. Is four meters, right? The phase constant. Constant is pi, right, it's the number in the front here. Okay, uh, determine the frequency and the period, okay, so the frequency, well, let's find the period first, because then frequency is easy to find, so. Um, to find the period. Well, we know omega, right, omega is three pi. So, um, if I look at my formula, something over something is the period. Yeah, two pi over, uh, two pi over omega. Is the period, so in this case, it's two pi over three pi, right, which is zero point six six. Right, which, which I'll just, okay, yeah, zero, zero point six six, so that's, that's our period, zero point six six. Um, seconds, and then our frequency is going to be, well, one over that, right, which is gonna be one point five. Per seconds. You just do one divided by zero point six. And that should be right, yeah, oh yeah, I guess I could say. Okay, so amplitude, phase constant, period, period's there, and frequency. Okay, the last, uh, the second last bit, part C is determine an expression for velocity and acceleration, well, for that, we just take the derivative, right? So, um, for this, well, what would the derivative be? Uh, V of T would be four, actually, negative four. Times three pi. Co, uh, sine of three pi T plus pi. So I just took the derivative of that. And so we can just combine this as negative twelve pi sine three pi T plus pi. And then to find the acceler- uh, yeah, the acceleration as a function of time, we take the derivative again, right, so it's negative twelve pi times three pi. Cosine of three pi T plus pi, which is going to be negative uh, thirty-six. Oh, I missed the pi, no, no, I didn't.
Wait, I have a question.
Yep.
So like, when it just become positive, cuz if it's like negative sign, doesn't it become negative cos, and will it cancel, like negative or no?
Well, the derivative of sine is cos, but the derivative of cos is negative sign. Well, I take, I take, well, okay, so if I, if I'm go- the reason I put a negative sign here is because. Our position function, X of T, was a cos function, right, it was four cos three pi. Plus pi, and when I take, when I, when I take the derivative, it's gonna be negative sign. Of three pi plus pi times the derivative of the, oh, sorry, like, four times negative sign. Four times negative sign of that. Uh, times the derivative of the inside, which is three pi.
Yeah, and, and that, oh, and then becomes negative. Cos, so it stays the same, it was, there's no other negative that.
Exactly, and I take the derivative again, it's not negative cos, it's, it's negative because there's negative in the front, but it's not, the derivative of sine is not negative cos. It's just cos. Alright, so. And there you go, that should be our position function. Uh, yeah, but it doesn't give answers for that, so it's fine, okay, now part D, determine the first four instance, instances. At which the particle passes that X value, so I'm gonna take my X function, first of all, and write it here, so that was four. Cosine three pi uh, T plus pi, that's it. Write that a little nicer, my handwriting is not very good today for some reason. Maybe I'm sitting weird. That's fine, um, so we want the first four instances where uh, X is one point eighty-four. In other words, we want the first four instances or first four solutions for T of this. Right, the first four instances where, where, we put a T value in here and we get one point eighty-four. Okay, so let's just start solving for T, right, so divide both sides by four, right, uh, now, cos, so cos of something is positive. Right, I'm gonna call that thing in there theta, okay, so theta equals three pi T plus pi, I do this just so that you can. Kind of forget about the things inside for a second, right, make sure you for- you don't really need to consider them when you're solving for cos here, so this is just. One point eighty-four over four equals cosine theta, all it is, is just replace the variable here. And so the reason, again, the reason I do that is because now you can see, it's, okay, we're just solving for theta, what values does theta have to be, right? For this to be true. So, while we do cosine inverse, right, so cosine inverse of one point eighty-four over four equals theta. So the first solution for theta, which will be the first instance where this is true. Um, won't quite be the time, but it'll be the angle, and we're only a few steps away from getting the time, is. Uh, oops, sorry, cos inverse of this, cos inverse of one point eighty-four over four. So I get one point oh nine. Uh, three. Is that one of the answers? Or that's not one of the answers, oh no, so sorry, that's, this is in angle, this is not in seconds, so that's why, cuz this, this is. Not, we're not quite there yet, that's the first solution, but you have to remember our cast rule, right? So we can get the four angles, the first four angles that make this true, right, so our cast rule says that. Cosine is positive, right, in uh, these two quadrants. So when you do cosine inverse, you always, well, I don't say always, but you usually, what it, what it gives you, especially if it's a positive number. Is the angle in the first quadrant, which sometimes is useless, really, uh, to the, not useless, but is, is not. Helpful in the question you're solving, right, especially if this was negative, then we wouldn't care about that, but. It's useful because it's the reference angle, so our reference angle is one, so I read that here, reference. Angle is one point oh nine three, so now that we have our reference angle, whatever, some angle like that, okay? Well, we ne- now we need to move, we need to get the first four occurrences of it, cuz that's what the question is asking for, the first four occurrences. Where this is the X value, so to get the first four occurrences, well, we, we have our first occurrence, is that angle. Our next occurrence will be in the fourth quadrant, okay, so how do we get the reference angle in the fourth quadrant? To do that. Essentially, you, you do two pi, as if you went all the way around, minus the reference angle. Right, so our next solution, that's theta one, theta two is gonna be two pi minus the referencing. Which is. Uh, one point oh nine three, oops, what did I do? So that's five point one nine, I'll just leave it like that, yeah, that's good. Okay, that's our theta two, what's our next theta, well, it'll be two ply, two ply, two pi, right, our next one will be. Well, like, the next quadrant where this could be is in the first quadrant again, right, so it's just gonna be our reference angle. Plus two pi, all the way around once. Right, our reference angle plus two pi. So that'll be our theta three. Which is our reference angle. Plus two pi. Which is one point oh nine three plus two pi, so I get seven. Point thirty-eight or three, I'll play the three seven six, I'll put, yeah. And then our final angle is you take, you take this second angle that we got down here, whoa. The second angle that we got down here, which was something like that, right, this isn't really to any kind of scale at all, because I'm just kind of guessing where one is. But. Right, but you take that, this angle, and you just add two pi to it, so whatever this angle was, just add two pi to it. And then you get the same angle in the same quadrant, but just two pi around, and that's the next occurrence. Um, where this could be, so theta three, uh, theta four, sorry, is that angle, five point nineteen plus two pi. So this is really a trig question that they gave you, right, that this is to, to be able to solve for later solutions. Okay, now we have our four thetas, right, these are the four first occurrences of X being this, X being what we want. So now, we just solve for T, remember theta, theta was equal to this, so for each occurrence, for each theta. For each theta, we're gonna solve for a unique T, and that'll be the, the T that we care about, so for theta one. That's going to be equal to three pi, I'll call it T one plus pi. So theta one is one point oh nine three, that's our reference angle. Equals three pi T one plus pi. And actually, you know what, I'm gonna rearrange this for T, and so I don't have to rearrange every time, I'm just gonna rearrange this equation for T. Uh, in fact, actually, I'll rearrange the, this equation for T.
Yeah, wait, so for the fourth reference, I'm, like, for the fourth angle, could you have done four pi minus the reference angle too?
Four pi minus the reference angle, yes, that would have worked, that would have. I'm gonna rearrange this one to, for T, so uh, I'll just say theta minus pi over three pi. Equals T, so I don't have to rearrange every time, so for our first theta one. This is for theta one, uh, we're gonna have, okay, well, theta one minus pi over three pi. Equals T one, so that's going to be one point oh nine three minus pi over three pi. Equals, well, equals T one, and I hope that is the number that we want, one point oh nine three minus pi. Over three pi, I get, yes, I get a negative of the answer for some reason. Um, did I make a weird mistake?
Wait, wait, okay, I, 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 I'm, I don't know, like, maybe we're, we're not supposed to solve maybe like the first quadrant? Is, might be that case?
Not take the first quadrant here?
Yeah, do you think that might have been a case?
Um, which way is the wave of, I, well, but I don't see why not, because we start, I guess we assume. Well, it doesn't really tell us. Let me see. Let's see if the rest of the answers are negative too, but okay, let's, I, I think it's okay, I don't really know.
Because all the values are gonna be like bigger than pi, so it's gonna be something bigger than pi minus pi divided by three pi, that's gonna give you.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, it is gonna be something bigger than pi for the rest of them.
Or is, or do you think it's one of those cases where like, it gives you a negative answer, and you're supposed to just disregard it or something?
Well, the reason that we're getting a negative answer is because, um, if we look at our function. It ha- it's a cos, and whatever that uh, X is the compression wise, doesn't really matter, but we're adding um, pi to it, right?
Yeah.
So kind of acts like a negative cos, so it's going down in the starting.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
So. Let me think for a second, yeah, okay. Let's, let's get the rest of the answers here, so that, this is the first answer, it's just negative, so let me, right, I got negative. Zero point two one seven seconds, yeah, our theta two, ooh, someone got a text message. Um, theta two is gonna be, well, uh, so for T two. Is equal to theta two minus pi over three pi, so that's going to be theta two was five point nineteen. Minus pi over three pi equals. Minus pi. Over three pi, so I get, oh, I get, I get zero point two one seven. So, okay, then what I'm thinking is that we need to find a theta five, what I'm thinking is we need to find a theta five, and that'll be the fourth entry. This one. Yeah, that's probably what's gonna end up happening, is that we disregard this solution entirely. And then, because this is the correct first answer, zero point two one seven. Then for theta three, I hope we're gonna get, what is the correct answer for the fourth one, so T three equals.
I think you're on the right track there now.
Yeah. Three pi equals now theta three, seven point three seven six. Seven point three seven six over, uh, sorry, minus pi over three pi equals. Uh, seven point three seven six minus pi over three pi. I feel like I'm gonna sneeze, but maybe not, okay, I think I'm okay, zero point four four nine seconds, which is the correct next answer. Theta four. Is going to be for T four, which is gonna be theta four minus pi over three pi. Uh, eleven point four seven three. Minus pi over three pi. Equals. Eleven point four seven three is zero point eight eight four. Seconds, and yeah, I guess, I guess what this means is that, uh, we disregard this first solution entirely because we got a negative time. And we don't want that, we want the first after zero, so I have to solve for a theta five here now. So theta five is gonna be the next angle, so we got, let me, let me recap what, what angles we got, first angle, okay, first angle. Oops, didn't mean to erase both, first, so, so that's the first angle, okay? The next one we get by going all the way around, okay, to our, to the other place where cos is uh, the value we want it to be, right, so right there. Okay, that's our second angle, um, the third angle is back over here, right? Where we're back to our first angle that we care about, plus two pi, okay, then again, back to here. So the angle we care, the second angle we care about, plus two pi, and then this angle again, right, so it's gonna be, you can, you can think of it like we're going. Two pi, four pi, plus the reference angle. Four pi plus the reference angle is gonna be theta five. Uh, is that right, hold on, four, yeah, four pi plus the reference angle. Plus one point oh nine three, so. Four pi plus one point oh nine three is thirteen point sixty. Six, six five nine. All those digits, and then now we go theta five. For T five is going to be theta five minus pi over three pi. Equals theta five thirteen point six five six, is that right? Nope, six five nine, I don't know why I wrote six. Thirteen point six five nine minus pi over three pi equals. Thirteen point six five nine minus pi, um, over three pi. Equals one point one one six seconds. Which is, so, yeah, that's, that's the answer. And these are the first four occurrences of X being that value.
This example.
Would you say, sorry?
Sorry, uh, yeah, I got a question about this example.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just go on back up, uh, when you were first solving for, before you even set theta equal to whatever was in the bracket.
Here?
Uh, yeah, so say if you were to sub in your, your time value, or sorry, your X value, which was one point eight four. And you were to isolate for T, just, you know, how you regularly would, and you do find T, could you find all? Like, all four instances of T just by adding the period to the time that you get when you isolate for T?
Adding the period, not.
Yeah, everything, no.
Quite, you could get every other one, because think of it like this, this is our wave, let me draw it a little.
Yeah.
Draw it a little nicer, okay, let's, on a slant, but imagine this is, this is the X value we ca- uh, no, yeah, this is, this is the height we care about. Right, we want the first four instances of when it's at this height. Right, so this is the, this is the T axis, the red line is the T axis. The red line's the T axis, and this is the, this is the, well, big slant, okay, let me, let me draw that nicer. Um, this is the sine wave, okay, okay, okay. Not bad, that one's kinda screwed up, this is our T axis. That's our T axis, this is our. X axis. That's our X axis, that's our T axis, okay, and let's just pretend this is the height we care about, right there, okay? So we want the first four instances of this, right, well, okay, let's say I solved for this T value, right? If I add the period to it, I would get this T value.
So would I have to increase by a phase shift, or that wouldn't work?
I would, what you would do is you just solve for both of these values, and then you can separately add the, the period to get to the next one. You could, we could.
So how would you solve for that other T?
Well, just the same, that would be like our theta one and theta two, that would be our second one, it'd be like, it'd be like, this is one angle, and this is the other angle.
So either way, I'm gonna just end up doing what you did.
Well, yeah, let's say, yeah, yeah, you, you have to at least solve for two angles like this, at least solve for two angles.
Okay, then, alright.
Okay, there you go. Okay. Okay, I got a, another question in the chat, so I'll do that now. Thank you, Manuel, for passing it along. Um, so. Let's take a look at this. So, I mean, uh, uh, first of all, is there any other questions left for this one, for this one here?
Uh, I have a question, oh, sorry.
So I'm sorry, you, you can go ahead.
Uh, I was just wondering, uh, for the theta five, right, you can also just say, like, you can also find theta five by doing two pi plus. Uh, seven point three or the theta three.
Uh, yeah, yeah, let's, it would be. Two pi plus theta three, that that's that seems right, yeah, let's try it, seven point three seven six plus two pi is thirteen points, yep.
Okay, cause like the four pi like yeah, it makes sense, but like it's kinda like.
It's another, you can think of it as another two pi around, right, that'll just be another full circle around, yeah, add two pi to it.
Thank you.
Okay, another question for this one?
Well, not really for this one, I just have a general question.
Okay.
Um I don't know if we're gonna get to actually like solving, you know, the previous midterms that he they posted.
Do I know if we're gonna get to it, or 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 we're probably not, I don't know.
Yeah, like i- i- is there a plan to get to it, or are we just like solving question?
For now, I think we're just gonna keep going with questions, maybe I'll take more suggestions, so if someone has a suggestion from the midterm, then yeah, we can we can do that for sure. I do just wanna get to more, I do wanna get like like finish, we don't have to finish every single practice question, I we can do uh just some Doppler questions at least. From from the book and some more intensity questions and decimal questions.
Also, I think they said that like the midterm question are gonna like resemble the tutorial questions.
Okay, so if anyone had wants me to do a tutorial question, I can try that too. I have not looked at any tutorial questions, so.
What did you say?
I didn't hear any of that, what?
The one I sent you is a tutorial question.
Oh, the one you sent me, okay, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, so yeah, like like that's like I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's what I heard, I heard that like it's gonna be like a lot of like tutorial questions and like the the DA. They seem to got hint towards that and apparently some online forum kind of confirmed that, so. As far as I'm concerned, it's gonna be a lot like tutorial questions.
Sounds good. Sounds good, so. Okay, let's let's go with this tutorial question and we'll see where we go from there, so. And is was there any other questions for this one that was left? I think we're good, okay, so number six, uh well, number not number six of anything, but it's number six from this document. The wave function Y X of T for a certain standing wave on a string fixed at both ends, okay, is given by, oh, if it's fixed at both ends, are we gonna? Okay, whatever, let's let's see. Y X of T equals that, sine coast, oh, this is. What, sine coast, okay. We have to use some sort of formula then.
Wait, is isn't that like interference?
Yes. Yes, interference is not in the midterm. Okay, yeah, so we're good, this is this is an interference question because it says find the speed and amplitude of the two traveling waves that result from the standing wave, so result in the standing wave, so. Um yeah, this is interference, we don't have to talk about interference because that's not part of, that's not part of this this test, so good. We moved forward a question. Someone also gave a question in the chat, am I allowed to do the web design questions? Maybe someone knows?
I think it's due for everyone, so it's good.
So it's okay, okay.
As long as nobody tells.
I mean, it's after the due date, so I don't think it matters.
This is being recorded too, so.
What do you mean? A lot of the tutorial questions were based on uh web design.
Yeah, okay.
So we're done, I think.
A lot of the web signs from the textbook, so.
Basically, it's all based off of something, alright?
You know, policy sixty be inhibiting my learning. Yeah, like you're trying to learn here, but then you're so worried about policy sixty, it's like ruining the learning experience.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, I guess so, sure. Uh let's start with this question here. Um here, I will, uh I'll just output chat question. Putting the titles helps me when I'm doing the uh timestamps after, I can see when a question starts. Um okay, so. Transverse sinusoidal, a transverse sinusoidal wave on a string has a period of that and travels in the negative X direction with a speed of that. At T equals zero, a particle on the string at X equals zero, so the X equals zero particle. Has a transverse position of that and is traveling downwards with a speed of that. Okay, what is the amplitude of the wave? Oh yeah, I remember this being difficult. And I answered it eventually, but I remember this being difficult, so let's write everything we know first of all. Uh so this is the period is thirty three over a thousand seconds, right, thirty three milliseconds. Uh it's traveling in the negative X direction, so I'll say, well. Okay, whatever, well, I'll just highlight that so we can see it. Um and the speed of the wave is thirty meters per second. Okay, so um. Y of zero zero equals zero point zero two. Right, that's what that's saying, and V of zero zero equals uh ne- uh yeah, negative one point five. Okay, so the first question is what is the amplitude of the wave? Okay, um forget how I did this, let's see.
Velocity equals omega A or something and she is that one?
But velocity doesn't equal omega A, does it?
Wasn't that like, is that one max plus or something like that?
That's V max.
The standing form of the equation with like a sine. And then since it's zero zero, it's just the base constant, I think.
Okay, yeah, so X X T of A uh code, when I'll do sign, sign. Uh K, so K is two pi over lambda, so we can, I'll just leave K for now, but we can solve for lambda, that's fine. Um so then that's K oh uh K X. Uh plus, traveling in the negative X direction, omega T plus phi, right? So now, well, we know some things, let's put in K and omega here, right, so let's start with omega. Omega is two pi over T, which we have, two pi over thirty three over a thousand. Right, so two pi. Over. Thirty three over a thousand.
Is it K X minus omega T?
It is minus if it's traveling to the right, but this is traveling to the left.
Does that affect omega?
Omega is not affected, it's just the sign, it's just the sign, omega is a positive number, always.
Okay, okay.
This sign is describing, yeah, how it's moving. Uh okay, so omega is one ninety point four and now let's find K, K is two pi over lambda, okay? And that's okay, we can find lambda because V equals um lambda over T, right? So I can solve for lambda by lambda equals VT, so thirty. Not thirty six, thirty times thirty three over a thousand, someone's got mad notifications on their phone. And it's real close to the microphone. Zero point nine nine meters, I guess, seconds. What is this, thirty is in meters per seconds and I multiply it by per second, no, by second, so it's meters, okay. Um so zero point nine nine meters is our lambda, so K equals uh two pi over zero point nine nine. Which is two pi. Nine, so that's six point three five. So that's our K, so now we have the equation, Y X, Y of X T equals A. Sin K X, so six point three five X plus omega T. One ninety point four T plus some phase constant. Okay, well, first of all, let's let's find the velocity function, because we have information about the velocity, so let's find the velocity function here. The velocity function would be V of X T. Is, oh, by the way, everybody, I have discussion chat open and I see all the questions that people suggested, so we will try that. Um but uh yeah, so discussions is is where I'm looking for questions. So the derivative of this, oh, hold on, wait, we don't have the derivative of this, never mind, because it's the. The V, then I guess.
We have Y of zero zero, we can just plug that in, solve for pi, uh solve for phi, oh wait, we don't have.
We have two unknowns. So wait, I think we can just do.
Isn't amplitude just, nevermind, nevermind.
I used the formula to find the amplitude, like I can give it to you, but I'm not sure like, like I got it like online, but I'm not sure like how they derived it.
Okay, sure.
So I used amplitude equals square root of V squared, T squared, and T is um is the period. Divided by four pi squared. And then I added uh plus phi squared, and then I found the amplitude.
Plus outside the square root or inside the square? Inside? And what did you add, sorry, what was it?
Oh yeah, I saw that online.
Phi squared?
Y squared.
Pi? Y squared?
Yeah.
Okay. You saw this somewhere, okay, I definitely did not use this when I solved.
What what I remember doing is like you got the equation for the Y and the V, right? So you divide the Y by the V, so.
Yeah.
You get a tan phi.
Yeah, I I also remember doing that, but how do we find V of, how do we find V of X T, I don't. But I don't have a function for V, I don't have a function.
Take the, yeah.
With respect to X, I guess?
Oh, no, with respect to T.
With, yeah, you derive it like you usually do, and then you have uh sine and cos.
So is the answer gonna be, is the answer gonna be, uh well.
Wait, they gave us the transverse speed, right, of a of an element, so we can just use the uh the simple harmonic motion formulas.
Oh, yeah, that's how I did it, yes, that's it, there, okay, okay, okay. So we know the transverse speed of one element is negative one point five, so we can just do simply. Y of T for that X value, for for X equals zero, I guess, yeah, for X equals zero. It's just gonna be A, uh well, it's actually gonna be A cos. Um one ninety plus four T plus phi. Right, and so then we know at zero. Okay, so we have, we have, uh oh yeah, sorry, then we need our velocity as a function of time, this we can take the derivative, derivative of. So it's gonna be one ninety point four A cos one ninety point four T plus phi. Yes. I don't know why I did that, okay, there you go. Um yeah, it is negative sign, okay, so we have two functions, we have the position as a function of X and T. And we also have. Velocity as a function of time, we can plug everything we know into this, we know at T equals zero, this is negative one point five. Okay, not liking it, oops.
Wait, I have a question.
Yeah.
So you know how you had Y of X comma T?
Yeah.
Um or when you found the derivative, but like, why didn't you keep the T?
This, this right here, so. This is its own equation, right, we we stop here.
I mean, like, like, the second time, like, when you do it, you only derive T, like, how come you didn't Q X?
So this right here is just one particle, one particle of the wave moving up and down. It is a harmonic oscillator, right, it moves up and down in in harmonic motion, like like we did in chapter fifteen, right, which is just A cos omega T. Plus phi, right? This is, this isn't thinking about the whole wave, this is just thinking about the one particle at X equals zero. Right, and so then from that, I can take a derivative, right, I can take a derivative of that, because it's just a single variable function. I can take a derivative and then uh this is something we know about, we know something about this function and we also know something about this function. So that's why it's useful to do that.
Okay, alright, thanks.
So let's try to put in the V information, so the X and T values are both zero, it's negative one point five, so negative one point five. Equals negative one ninety point four A sine of phi. Cause T is zero. And then for our position, well, we know the position is zero point zero two is equal to A. Uh the multiple everyone, yeah, sine. Of one ninety point four T plus phi. Nope, sorry, of just plus five, okay, hold on, we lose a. We lose a. Something's wrong here, hold on.
Isn't it supposed to be cos?
It feels like it should, but is this wrong? No, it is wrong, it is wrong, um. It is wrong. What did I do? Y X T A sign, that's fine. Then a single piece is going A cos. Well, I.
Wait, um you know when you had the Y X T version?
Y X T here, up here?
Yeah, so how come we like, how come into the Y T version, you switch it to cos?
This is a different, this is a different function entirely, here, let me separate them.
Oh, okay.
This is a different, this is a different function entirely, this.
Alright.
This is for the whole. Wave. This. And this. Is for. Single. Particle. At X equals zero.
Isn't supposed to be sign?
Here?
The Y, yeah.
Well, for a harmon- okay, I can make it sign and it. Doesn't actually change anything.
Web design uses sign for these kind of things, uh from what I saw.
Yeah, but that feels weird that I can just switch it to sign, because now.
Yeah, it's gonna make it more confusing, I think it's fine.
But the thing is, I I can't, well, I guess maybe I can progress, sign.
In in the lecture notes, um the only reason that they did use. Pose for har- harmonic motion and sign for uh like a wave is because they wanted to differentiate it, because. There is no real difference, it's just the phase shift of power to uh as a difference, right? So they only wanted to make it so it was it would be different.
Because what do I do now, how do I solve this now, I don't know.
You have to divide Y of T by something.
I can't divide it by this.
So then you could just isolate for A.
No, you mean Y of Y of X and T by uh V of T. Cause those are the two equations we have, whatever the two equations we got, we have to divide them by each other, so they have to be, one has to be cos and one has to be.
Yeah, one has to be cos and one has to be sign, exactly, so that's why I need to switch, that's why I wanna switch this to sign. It feels very wrong that I'm just allowed to switch that, but I have to. And now I can divide it, right, I'll divide, I'll I'll do. This is, this is our equation number one, this is our equation number two.
Yo, if you can, can you just scroll up real quick so I can take a picture and try doing it?
Here, this way?
Not like the the actual question?
Oh, the question?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
No problem, so I'll do one divided by two. So it'll be, I'll write like this, one over two, so it's going to be zero.
Sorry to interrupt you, but apparently the zero, the two centimeters and the velocity that was given to us is the transverse velocity. Like they're both uh for the element.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 hold on, why did, why didn't I think of that, yeah, that is just for the element, what did I do here, this is the position.
Yeah, that's what we got confused with the sign and cos.
Okay, we don't care about the whole wave then.
Yeah, I don't think so.
We don't care about the whole wave, we just wanna care about that one. We don't care about the whole wave, we just wanna care about that one. Particle at X equals zero, well, it has a Y value of that and has a V uh a a velocity value of that. So now. Just right from here, so we have the, the velocity and position of the particle at X equals zero. As a function of time in both these cases, right, and we don't need that either. Right? So from here, although maybe it'll ask me for a question like that at whatever. So from here, yeah, we know information about this, so. Y of T, well, at T equals zero, this is zero point zero two A sine phi. And this is negative one point five. This should be cos, this should be negative sign. Doesn't actually matter, but. Point four, A. Sorry, so then this should be cos. There, and this should be sine of phi. So these are the two equations I get. These are the two equations I get. Right? And this is number one, this is number two, because I wanna do one divided by two. Right, so it's gonna be negative one point five over zero point zero two equals. This divided by this, so I'll write negative one ninety point four. A sine phi over A cos phi, perfect. Yeah, yeah, they will, they will, I just wanna write them so people see.
We need to cancel all the A's?
Yeah, we're basically just doing substitution kind of thing.
Yes, we're trying to find phi now, we're trying to find the phase constant.
Oh yeah, cause I was thinking we gotta do that. And then we're gonna find using the phase customer can uh go to find A.
So this is gonna be one point five over zero point zero two times one ninety point four. Um so I get, did I write that right, tan inverse of one point five, zero point zero two times one ninety point four, yeah. Zero point three seven five. Phi, and so now to find A, well, I can just take whatever equation and rearrange for A, let's just take the second equation.
Adam, can I ask a question? Yeah, so um, wh- this is the web assign problem, right? Yeah, so when doing this, what I had to do is I had to take the to, after finding phi. I had to do pi minus phi to get the second solution and that's how I got the right answer. So I want to ask you like if you know when you take. Uh there's like a way to figure it out, um which angle you take, which phi you take, um when you inverse. If you know what that is.
Well, it depends on these initial conditions more, I guess. Because, okay, well, it's traveling in the negative, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's traveling in the negative X direction. So we have to take that into account, we have multiple angles that, multiple values that phi could be here, yeah, you're you're right. I I forgot that they gave us this piece of information here. Right? This piece of information, and that that's what makes it. Oh wait, no, hold on, that's not what makes it, never mind, they give us. The velocity being negative, yes, this is the fact that the the velocity is traveling downward with that speed at that time. Although, wouldn't that already be taken into account with the negative sign here?
No, no, that's just the direction of motion, I think. Right, like if whether it's moving to the left or to the right, so I mean, so if you were right like right now on your last uh. On your last line, when you're fighting theta. Uh you just find the two occurrences when when uh tan is positive. And then you test both of those, uh both both of those. Uh and back to your original equation and if it's a negative, then you're good. And then in the velocity equation.
Well, the thing is, is I can't put in the velocity equation yet, I don't have the amplitude, so I need to choose one to solve for, for. A with, but yeah, it has to be one, has to be one where the velocity is negative, where the velocity is going downward at that point, right? Well, the velocity is the velocity, but the position is going downward at that point. So yeah, there's another solution for phi here. The other solution is. Right, so we use our. C A S T, so tan is positive, so where is tan positive? Here and here. Right, so our first solution is is somewhere here to get that angle phi. Well, that's not, well, yeah, that is phi actually, in this case. Um to get that angle into the third quadrant, we do pi plus phi. And then we get the, well, that's not how the angle goes, is it? That's pi plus phi. So pi plus the answer. So my other solution is three point five one seven equals phi two. Okay, now how do we choose which one's the right one? Well, the right one. Right without? Neither of those is the answer that was checked marked here.
So when you substitute either of them, I just did, both of you giving the, both of them give you the same answer.
Oh, okay, 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 good.
So I was looking at it on on decimals and so because tan has a period of pi. Um the second, I guess, kinda answer would be in um. It would just be like pi minus the phase constant, that's how I got the answer.
Pi minus the phase constant?
Pi minus the first one that you found.
Yeah, uh the 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 re- reference angle, yeah. But why minus though? We wanna go into the, we wanna go into the third quadrant, so we would do pi plus the reference angle.
Yeah, it's so if you think about it, like think about like the graph of tangent, um. It starts going upwards and then in the after pi over two, it'll be negative, I guess, cause it'll. Yeah, cause it'll be um.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I guess when you you've. Cause we're trying to make the coast uh initial velocity, which is, we have a cosine function for the velocity, right?
Uh for the velocity, uh a sign function for the velocity.
I see. Okay, well, sign starts, oh yeah, so if sign starts positively. And then we have a negative amplitude multiplication, then it'll be negative, but then I guess the phase shift will probably shift.
Yeah, we can't see right from here, it's too much to. So if you look at the graph, right, that's that's what the cast rule is, if if you imagine the graphs, where is it positive, where is it negative? Yeah, okay, well, let's let's see if both of these things give us the same phi here. Let's let's see if, I mean, give us the same amplitude. So I'll solve for one with phi one and then solve the other one phi two, so. Zero point zero two over cosine. Zero point three seven five, I get. Zero point zero two one five meters and then the other one that I get. Is. Three point, three point five one seven, so I get negative. Zero point zero two one five, which is the same thing when we're talking about amplitudes. But uh, yeah, I get negative technically, but again, amplitudes. Doesn't particularly matter. So. Oh no, but I guess the negative sign would change things, hold on, the amplitude is the same. Amplitude is the same. Is that the answer? Zero point zero? Two one five, yeah, that's right. Neither of those is the phase constant, which is weird. That we solve for.
Which one, what did we get for the phase constant? We got. When we solve.
We got zero point three seven five and three point five one seven.
What is the answer for the face content?
One point nine four six. And I remember this, actually, I remember when I was doing this, I had the exact same problem, I found the amplitude correctly and the phase constant was wrong.
Uh oh, I think you just add pi over two. Because uh one is cosine, the other is sine. Oh, you change it.
When it's cosine. Does that give them the answer? Here, let's try, yeah, yeah, let's try.
Uh I was just gonna say that um when I was doing this question, I did the. Why are the Y uh the position function over the velocity function and I got my. And then I added pi to it and then I got my right answer, my right.
Why'd you add?
Sorry?
Why'd you add pi to it?
No, no, I'm saying afterwards, after I found my theta, then I added pi. But 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 what you did was um you did velocity right. Velocity over um.
Velocity over position.
Position, which does. It's weird, cause when I was doing position, I made it sign and when I made my velocity, I made it cos and so then. So then when I did, uh when I did position over velocity, it's ten for me.
Well, actually, no, then you would have a different. You'd have a different value because, right, they're just shifted by the same amount. So yeah, I guess that does actually make sense. Why would we pi over two? Because if you, I guess what they're assuming in the question is that you use a sign. Well, there you go, you, well, no, that's not for a, that's not for the single uh.
Uh Adam? Uh so like for the wave, we use the sign, right? For the position, but for the transverse, we use.
Usually, but I think they're assuming you're using a sign here.
Uh so I can use cosine, right?
You you can use a cosine, you can use a cosine anytime you want, yeah.
Phi would be different.
The phi would be different, the phi would be different, yeah, so hopefully on the, so they are assuming you're using a sign here because if I use, because. My phase shift is off by pi over two. If I take this value and add pi over two to it, I get the correct answer. Because sine and cos are off by pi over two. So since I'm starting off with an assumption that's off by pi over two, my answer will be off by pi over two. Which tells me that they are assuming that you're using a sign function for the transverse position. Which again is not something that we usually do. Not something that, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter, but it matters when you're trying to get the right answer, right? Um it's the same wave, it's just a different phase phase shift. So that's the, that was the problem. We don't actually need any of this stuff that I wrote here, that's not necessary. Well, not, yeah, not necessary and then.
Wait, so it it's assuming that our Y of T is uh made with a sign?
That's why our answer is off by pi over two. No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, okay, can we move, let's move on to the next part, but you you anybody, yeah, you ask your question.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I like. Did it the, you know how there's like the, the equation that you wrote, like right here on your um le- uh right? The A is equal to the square root. Like, yeah, like I know how to like. Get to that.
Okay, how, so how do you get to that?
Okay, so what I did was um. I wrote like the general equation and I like, like I know that it's a transverse, but I like considered it like how you considered in the beginning. Where all I did was it, where I wrote Y is equal to A sine. K X plus uh W T plus uh phi, sorry, and then I did the. And then I derived the velocity formula. A W, it'd be A W cos.
Would it be A omega? We don't know how to take a derivative of a multi-variable function like this.
You just take the X as constant.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh and then the same stuff that's in the, the X. Uh sorry, K X plus.
But the thing is, is that the velocity of a wave is not a function of. The position and time or anything like that, right? The velocity of wave is constant.
Right, but what they, what it gives us is um, it gives us the velocity of a particle at uh traveling downwards. In the question, which is why, I believe that's how the question is worded.
You have to then choose a particle, you have to then say this is X equals zero.
Yeah, they told us. Yeah, but I'm just generalizing it for now and then later on I'll add that. Uh but but basically what I did was I used, you know the trig identity, the Pythagorean trig identity, which is like sine. Uh sine squared, Y plus cos squared Y is equal to one. I basically pu- put, I basically put that, these two functions into that and then I like rearrange for A. Cause you can do that. And then I found. Yeah, so then, so basically what I did was I wrote like cos. Cos um W T uh W T plus uh phi is equal to um square root of one minus.
Sign.
Sin squared.
Sin squared, yeah.
Yeah, and then um.
Yeah, that's what I did as well.
If you want, I'll just send it on the group. It is the thing that Slater uses.
All doing some complicated stuff, like.
I didn't need a trig identity for this one, to be honest with you. It's just um. The vel- the like by setting the velocity, like you just use a simple equation for a harmonic oscillator. Because really it gives us a particle. Yeah, but I I I don't know where you need a trig identity.
Okay, let's just make our lives easier and not do anything with the trigger identity. I think I think we did it correctly, I think we're fine, it's just um the phase constant that's weird.
Yeah. Yeah.
Y by V and the, but they plugged uh zero for T. So if you scroll down. You see those two. For Y and V at the bottom.
These things, here?
Those two, the Y and V, so they divided the Y equation by the V one and they sub zero for T.
Yeah, that that's that's pretty much exactly what I did here. That's pretty much exactly what this is, that that this is here.
I think it was better if you didn't solve for A, like if you just. Um just used um like, instead of having minus one ninety, you just solve for it. So A and then then you can find the phase constant first.
Rearrange both these for A?
I think I know what the issue is.
You don't sub it and you like, what the guy said before, you just divide it, but instead of having minus one ninety, you keep it as A, right, and then it cancels out. And once you cancel it out, you can solve for um. Like um the phase constant, like the angle.
Isn't that what I did? The this right here, that's exactly.
But you solve for A, like you input it, I I know it was the same, but if you like. What happens is if you don't, ass- cause you assume that A is the same anyways for both the equations, right? But since you inputted. It that, you won't get the phase ang- like the actual.
That's your omega, that's not your A.
This here, this is, this is, this is the uh omega here. Right, that's, that's omega from our wave equation. That we used. In A, A was kept as a variable, it just canceled because of the dividing, it's canceled here.
Um so what I did.
Works, I'm not sure why it's not working.
Um so what I did was, uh so before I plugged in on the values of Y and V, like on my numerator. It was uh, so it was tan inverse two pi Y over um V times T.
Why, where'd you get two pi from?
Two pi over T.
And then after that, I was able to find uh. My fees constant and then I just added pi and then I got the right answer.
You added pi?
Yeah, cause my fees constant was negative. So then, and then, yeah.
I don't really know why to add pi, I see it, well, yeah, it worked, but. For me, this, this worked, honestly, everything worked here, it's just that they is, to my, at least, I'm I'm understanding that they assumed we're using a sign graph. We're using a sign thing for our position function. So since we were using a sign for our position function, my thing is my my answer here, pi uh for phi is off by pi over two. So I would just use this one and add pi over two.
A quick question, how do you know when to like add or subtract pi over two? If you use like coastal sign.
Well, you you really wouldn't have to usually, they tell you make it with some sort of function or if it's on the test, I'm quite certain he's, it's just gonna be make it with a cos function. You make the transverse wave with the cos function and the actual wave wave with the sign function.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Adam, please scroll down.
Adam, so I found an explanation for the adding the.
Adam, so I found an explanation for the adding the adding pi thing, I posted on the discussions, I don't understand it. Maybe you understand it.
I think I know where you went around, the omega shouldn't be negative, why is your omega negative?
Oh, no, because I took the derivative and so it's negative.
Uh no, it's not.
The negative cancels out later, so it doesn't really matter.
Not supposed to cancel all, your phi is supposed to be negative and then you add pi to it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but this negative sign came from somewhere, it came because I took the derivative of cos.
Started with cos, I started with sine.
Exactly, that's that's the whole confusion here, right, that we started with cos. Which is, I think, and that's like that's how we were taught to start with cos for a transverse thing, but. So I guess it it just changes the answer by a little bit.
Do you get why we need to add the pi at the end?
I didn't have to add pi, I added pi over two and that works, but let's see what happened here. So, yeah, this is, so they, of course, they say they have the their position function is a sine function. They have their velocity function is a cosine function, so you divide it. You get this, right, so you can solve for phi by doing this. We substitute that from equation two, which I guess is the. We substitute omega from equation two. Oh, just like what the omega is two pi over T? Substitute the numerical values, negative one point one nine plus pi. Here we added pi since the tangent is negative in either the second or fourth quadrants. We determine which quadrant by showing the signs of the sine and cosine terms. Determined which quadrant by showing the signs of the sign and goes in terms, the function has a positive sign. Hence, the angle is in the second quadrant. Okay, so what they're saying is that. Why do I draw like that? Uh we have we have these, we got an angle that is in this quadrant. The. Cosine of that angle should be negative, right? Cosine of that angle should be negative. Because the velocity is negative, so V equals omega A or A omega. Cosine of phi, right, so cosine of phi should be negative because we want our velocity to be negative, well, where's? Cosine negative, it's definitely not negative, it's definitely not negative here or here, it's only negative here and here. So what they did is they added pi to go to the second quadrant. Right? And so now this angle is the solution. Not very natural, I'd say, but that's what they're saying. This whole thing that they're explaining from uh from here to here is just saying casserole. From here to here, I guess, but.
Where are these solutions?
I don't know, I I don't, I didn't get the solution.
I posted a link on in discussions, that's like this latter thing.
Is this still uh the web assign question?
This is still the web assign question, yeah.
Oh, I have the solution for it.
Well, we got, we got the answer eventually, we got the answer, it's just like weird how how the answer was.
I'll send you a thing.
But yeah, so there's there's that um. Okay, let's 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 start part C, but yeah, man, why you send me that? Let's do part C, so part C is just what's what's the maximum transverse speed, yeah?
Never mind, never mind.
What's the maximum transverse speed? Well, we just say V max is equal to A omega. So A was um, A was zero point zero two one five. And then omega was. Here, one ninety point four. Alright, so um zero point zero two one five times one ninety point four. Uh so this is four point oh nine three six, that's our V max. Okay, and then for C, uh we wanna write the function as a function, which we did. While I erased it, so let's let's write it, so it's gonna be um zero point so. After all these things, first of part D, Y of X T is gonna be A sine. Uh K X. Plus omega T uh plus phi, right? So we can plug everything in, we know, zero point zero two one five. Sign uh K was, we calculated up here, six point thirty five. Uh X plus one ninety point four. T plus phi, which we said was this plus pi over two, which I, oh well, it's just from the answer here, so. One point nine four two. Is that right? So I'd I'd say, I'd say it's, they will give, they will be more clear in the question about what you're supposed to be starting with, what kind of function you're supposed to be starting with. For a transverse wave, I would say do a cosine and for the normal wave function, do a sine wave. But that screwed us up here, right? By doing that, so. I I guess this, this would be the correct answer if we were meant to use a cosine wave. Yeah, it would be the right answer if we were meant to use a cosine wave.
Could you like grease A what you did in like part B and A?
Yeah, so those are kind of together, right? But um. So what is the, so we started with what is the amplitude of the wave, so we have um. Two different functions that we get from this information here. Two different functions you get from this information, so we have a information about our position function, information about our velocity function. So I, sorry, about, this is the position and the velocity of the particle at X equals zero. Right, of at X equals zero. So I wrote those functions out, right, this is for the particle X equals zero. And what I wanna solve for is this phi and this A, so I have two equations, two unknowns, I can plug everything I know in. And I get this. From there, I divide the, it's good to just divide the sine one by the cos one, that's why I do. This one's one, this one's two, because cos over sine is cotan, but a little harder to solve for. Phi with that, not really, but kind of, and then um so. This equation divided by this equation is this constant, so then it's this divided by this, which is just. One ninety point four tan theta, tan phi, I mean. And so solve for phi, I got this answer for phi. Either of these answers get me the same A value by using this equation, this is my equation number two. Right, so I rearranged, they both get me the same A value, right? But one of them is right and one of them is wrong, so this would be the right answer if we were starting, if our function was meant to be a cos function. The thing is, is that. To my understanding, the question was expecting us to start with a sine function for our transverse thing. If we did use a sine function, we would get the right answer. Um so to to get from this to the right answer, you just add pi over two, because sine and cos are off by pi over two.
Even if you use a sine function, you would just need to add pi at the end, so like either way you gotta add something.
I guess so, at the end you add pi, would you need to or I wouldn't just get the numbers spat out here?
No, I used the sign one and I got the negative phase difference.
You're the negative of the answer, okay, yeah, so then you'd have to do this thing at the end here, you'd get. This in radians, this negative, but it's a negative amount, right? So, I guess it is, it is negative phi. So we don't want that to be in the th- in the fourth quadrant, though, we need it to be in the second quadrant, because this is where. Um our cosine function is negative, it could be in the third, fourth quadrant too, but I guess that wouldn't be the the first occurrence of it. I guess you just think about where's the first occurrence, so. Well, how do we get an angle from the third quadrant, from the fourth quadrant to the second quadrant, you just add pi? And now this angle is this angle, same as there, and that's why you need to add there. So weird, we didn't use this equation here.
So Adam, um so the the om- like omega in front of T, right, uh when it comes to like sine and cosine functions. Basically, the phase constant has, or sorry, that omega value that only messes with the um. I guess like the frequency and uh.
And the period.
Right, so the actual phase constant only um, assuming like your omega isn't factored out or whatever. Um the phase constant will just like shift it left or right without affecting any of that.
Yeah, it doesn't, the the phase constant doesn't affect the actual like shape of the wave. It just moves, moves it to different parts of the phase.
Exactly, so then looking at that, I guess it's a little easier to figure it out, right, cuz if we have like a initial vert- uh positive position and then a. Negative derivative, which is the velocity, then you can just solely look at um. You can look at the phase shift, right, because cuz you know, like obviously sine is positive to begin with and cosine is negative to begin with. So then that makes it a little bit easier to consolidate things.
Wait, hold on, wait, sign, yeah, 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 it it would be, what what you would do. Let me think of what you just. Wait, you said sine is positive to begin with, cosine, well, cosine is also positive to begin with, if you put no phase shift.
Oh, yeah, 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 my bad, no, my bad, yes, exactly, yeah.
All all we need to figure out is that the the velocity should be a negative number, right, the velocity should be a negative number, so what that means is is. Uh sorry, so this stuff at the bottom here is not what I had to do, because I'd used a. Sine function, right, but we were using, let's say our velocity is this, our velocity is A omega cosine. Something, something, something phi, right, well, we want this value, right, to be a negative number. Because this is not a negative number, that's a positive number, we want our velocity to be negative, so we need this to be negative, right? So we need to choose a phi that makes that negative, the phi that we get spat out at us, which is a negative radiant amount, is not is not a uh. Does not have a negative cosine value, right, because. So we need to move it to somewhere where it does have a negative cosine.
And then we also have to consider the initial position, which is.
Which which comes from, which which is, we get phi out of that. Right, we get phi out of both considering the initial position and the initial velocity, right, so that's that's already out there.
Cool, okay.
Okay, so good to keep going. We finished that question. Finish this one. So I will move on to the next question, I guess, someone else sent me suggested problem, so maybe I will do. Let me see, yeah, okay, let's do this, let me see it for a second. Okay, here, um again, this is a web assigned problem, so uh I, yeah, it's probably okay that I'm doing it, it's fine. So, transverse wave on a string is described by this wave function, where X and Y are in meters and T is in seconds. Consider the element uh at X equals zero. Okay, what time interval between the first two incidents when this element has a Y position of zero point one seven five? This is kind of similar to our second question that we did, where we had to find the first four instances of something, right, so. What's the time interval between the first two instances instances of this element being that? So, zero point one seven five equals zero point three two four. Sin of eighty three point sixty. Notice I dropped the X because we said it's the it's the element of the string at X equals zero. So now, well, we can just try to solve for T, right, so what are the first two occurrences where this happens? Zero point three two four, right, that's my value like that. And now I take the, well, the sine inverse, right, so the sine inverse of that. Zero point one seven five over zero point three two four is so my first um. Theta equals eighty three point sixty. Put a theta there instead, so my first theta will be. Uh zero point five seven one, okay, that works, and so remember our casserole. Yes, I do have to draw it out every time, so this is our solution for theta one, which is here. And then we wanna get that into the second quadrant, so we just do, ooh, someone got a big sneeze, bless you. Bless you. Okay, so we 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 wanna, we wanna try to get our um um. Angle into the second quadrant, so we do pi minus that reference angle, so our theta two is pi. Minus the angle we got, which is gonna be two point five seven one, okay. There's the two theta values, now let's find a T value, if one of these. Get give us a negative T value, which it won't, but if if one of them did, we'd have to find theta three, which is the next occurrence. Right, but it it's not good, it's not. Cuz there's no phase shift. So let's take a look here, this is uh gonna be so so uh eighty. Well, I can just take this theta equals eighty three point six T. And rearrange that for T, so T equals theta over eighty three point six, so. For theta one, this is going to be theta, well, T one is gonna be theta one. Over eighty three point six, so uh zero point five seven one over eighty three point six. Which is zero point five seven one over eighty three point six. Which is uh zero point zero zero six eight three, and then for theta two. We have T two is gonna be theta two over eighty three point six. Which is going to be two point, oh well, I'll write it, two point five seven one over eighty three point six. So this is two point five seven one over eighty three point six. And I get zero point zero three oh eight. So what's the time interval between these things? So delta T is zero point zero three oh eight minus zero point zero zero six eight three. Which is answer minus zero point zero zero six eight three, and I get zero point zero two three nine seconds. Right, which is how many milliseconds, one, two, three, twenty three point nine milliseconds. Okay, so there's that, I got my milliseconds. Um let me check, I'm still recording. So. Uh that's my time interval, that's for part A, and then for part B, part B is just asking what distance does the wave travel in that time interval? Right, well, we just need to find the speed of the wave, right, so let's just do that here. The speed of the wave, well, we can just say that the speed of the wave is lambda F, probably a better way to do it, just lambda. Yeah, speed of the wave is lambda over T, which you can say is omega over uh omega over K. But I did this last time, how that is true, but yeah, if someone wants me to explain it, I can explain it again, but it is in the video yesterday. I didn't timestamp it, so that'll be a lot of sorting through, so if someone wants me to explain it, I will explain it. Uh this is, so this is gonna be eighty three point six over one point eighty five. Eighty three point six over one point eighty five, so this is V is forty five point two. So now that we know our velocity, well, what the question is, what distance does the something travel with, you know, over this time interval with this velocity, well. V equals D over T and D equals VT, which is forty five point two. Times zero point zero two three nine. So this is forty five point two times zero point zero two three nine. I got one point oh eight meters. And that's actually for meters, yes.
Wait, sorry, I was paying attention for for this one, did you use?
Wait, sorry, I was paying attention for, for this one, did you use the first angle that we found? Like from sine.
I used. No, I used, I used both of them, because we're solving for T. We're solving for the first two occurrences of this happening. Right? So I use both of them. Each of them will independently give me a T value. Right? It's it's like.
Okay, so you found the first like reference angle, so sorry, no, you used the first reference angle that we found, right?
Yeah, I did, I did.
Okay, cause some questions, they they just don't use it, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, if if it was a negative number, right? If um. If it was a a na- like, um, where am I looking? Yeah, yeah, if this was a negative number, then I wouldn't necessarily use the first angle that I got. I would probably change it to something else. That would just be a reference angle, unless it was negative. In which case it would be negative of the reference angle.
Okay, yeah.
But yeah, that's that's the idea. And so there's my answer for that. Any questions about this one? Someone sent me a message, but I think they sent me a request, but I think they deleted it, so. Not there. So then I think I'm out of. I think I'm out of um. Messages, I mean, I'm out of suggestions.
Adam.
Yes.
So for the um. We got the initial reference angle and then just, did you just take the uh angle in the next quadrant for data two?
Yeah, that's right. I got this reference angle here, that's my theta one, but I want that angle here as well. Right? That's theta two. So I did uh pi minus theta one. Sorry, just to be clear, that, this, technically, I wrote something wrong there. Let me write that a little bit better.
And it's a sine function, so it has to be in quadrant two, right?
One or two, one or two, yeah. This, this angle is, this angle is still theta one. This angle is theta two.
Yep.
That's theta two. That's why we need to solve for it. If if it was just theta one again, it would just be theta one again, but it's not.
Thanks.
Yeah, exactly.
Could you scroll down a bit? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Oh, boy, okay. Yes, I think this one is long.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you saw that question, yeah. Yes, it's all back. All back.
Yeah, so. Should we try it?
Uh, I mean, you you'll have to if you don't want to, but.
There are other questions that people sent, I wanna see the other, yeah?
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot to read.
Is it, yeah?
We can try question five from the third, um, from the third tutorial.
Question, could you send it to me if you want me to do it? Yeah, could you send like?
It's something with like copper and like, it's like a bunch of tubes and like, uh, yeah, it's, I'll send it to you right now, just a second.
And one person sent me this question, I just wanna, I I I saw it in the textbook and I remember looking at it and being like, I don't know how to do it, so let's. Is that even, I don't think this was part of our suggested problems.
Uh, that wasn't the tutorial to the same balloon question.
This balloon question?
Yeah.
Send me to the top for some reason. At least we didn't write that much. So should we give it a try? Okay, I guess we'll, let's give it a read. A light balloon is filled with helium of that density, is tied to a string of that length. The string is tied to the ground forming an inverted simple pendulum. If the balloon is displaced slightly from equilibrium. And released, show that the motion is simple, is a simple harmonic, and determine the period of the motion. Take the density of the air to be that, use an analogy with the simple pendulum in C chapter fourteen. Assume air applies a buoyant force on the balloon but does not otherwise affect its motion.
Wait, actually, maybe you should do the tutorial version. It's it's a little bit easier to understand, cause they they give you all the steps.
Okay, yes. I would like to do it in the tutorial.
Okay, Adam, I sent you the question, do you have it?
Is this the balloon one?
Oh, this is the tutorial, like this is different, different.
Oh, we did this yesterday, we did this, it's at the end of the video yesterday.
Yeah, we did the copper one yesterday.
I mean, never mind, yeah.
It's at the end of the video yesterday, it's, I think, the last question we did.
Wait, I can send you the solution, whoever was asking, if you want it.
Yeah, 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 send, send, send me please, yes, yes, send it.
Yeah, I'll put in the discussions, so Adam doesn't have to do it.
And then, could you send me that question, the balloon one from the thing?
Yeah, I'm trying to get that, it's still loading.
Well, maybe I can find it too.
Could we do some like damped harmonic motion and some Doppler effect stuff?
Yes, I would like to do some of that. Maybe.
But those are easy.
Yeah, yeah, at le- at least, let's at least do some Doppler effect questions, yeah. Let's see, let me look at the textbook. So many documents open. Okay, yeah, let's look at a Doppler effect question, yeah, send me in, send questions in. That's the balloon one, okay. Okay, let's, let's, let's do this one, let's do the balloon one first, and then afterwards, I guess we'll do some um. Doppler effect questions. So let's start here. Okay. A light balloon filled with helium of that density is tied to a string of that length. The string is tied to the ground forming an inverted simple pendulum. The density of air, someone has their mic on, I hear it echoing. Um, so the density of air is that balloons feel an upward force called buoyancy, the buoyant force. Is equal to the weight of the air, which would fit inside the balloon. The buoyant force is, yeah, 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 yeah. So the, the weight of the air, is equal to the weight? No, not just the weight. Is equal to that, I guess, act, okay. M, mass of the air displaced. Um, times G, do we have the volume of the, of the balloon? No, we don't have the volume of the balloon.
No, I don't think so.
So what would the density do for us? I don't really know, but okay. Um, okay, draw a free body diagram on the balloon when it is slightly displaced. In figure B, the helium inside the balloon has mass, neglect the mass of the balloon material, okay? So we have from here, a force of tension, I guess, force of tension. We have a buoyant force. Buoyant force. And we have a force of gravity. Going down. I guess so. Um, neglect the mass, yeah, yeah. Of the forces acting on your balloon, which causes a torque? Use the attachment point of the string on the floor as pivot. I forget torque now, but um, so this is that, it would be. Do you have the answers, like the actual solutions, or did they not post the solutions?
Wait, why are they, like, are they sending us no torque for this? I think so, do they?
Do they want us to know torque for this test?
Yeah, like they don't.
Quite possibly, quite possi- I mean, it was from last, the last course, they did ask a few questions with torque on it. Torque is the like, um, the acceleration, the acceleration, no, like the forces, but for angular stuff. So torque. Is, uh, is. The force creating the torque times the distance from the pivot. Times sine of the angle between those two things.
That sounds like energy, that looks a bit, a bit like energy.
Yeah, which is, which is similar, very similar, yeah, it is, it is very similar. So. It's just, yeah, it's just different, what they mean is different things, but yeah, it's a, it's a similar thing, because they're both cross products. Um, or maybe force is the top product, and it's a ghost, but whatever. So here. We have, what's causing a torque? Well, the sign of the angle between the radial vector and the force vector is zero for the force of tension. So the force of gravity and the buoyant force are both causing. Are both causing. The thing, so force, I just say, force of gravity and the buoyant force. Right? Yeah, I think so. Are there any answers for this? Did they post the answers to the tutorials?
There's just answers.
Yeah, there's just answers, they don't.
Then only the numerical ones.
Okay. Let's see how it goes. Um, using Newton's second law for rotation, da da da, da da da. Describe the motion of the balloon, treat the balloon as a point mass with moment of inertia, that. Mass of the helium, use the small angle approximation, find the constant in the terms of the density of helium, the density of air. Constant in terms of the density of helium, density of air, G and L. Okay, so we need to do some of the torques. Some of the torques equals I A. So some of the torques, what are the torques acting here? Well, our first torque from the force of gravity is going to be, well, the force of gravity. MG times the distance between them, which is L, right? Times sine of the angle between them, which is sine of, what's the angle between them? It's gonna just be, um, it's going to be um ninety plus theta. Because um. Uh, because. If I draw it bigger. This is the balloon. Oh, okay. This is the balloon, that's our angle. So the radial vector coming from the pivot is like this. Right? Okay, the radial vector. Is like this, right? So it comes like that. I'll draw it extra big. And then from here. The force of gravity, let's just say it's acting here, is like that. So the angle we want. The angle we want is this angle, which is. Oh, sorry, this is theta. This is theta. So this angle here is gonna be theta. Right? Yeah, that angle there is gonna be theta, and we wanna add not ninety, we wanna add um ninety and then. Will that be theta? No, it won't be. What is that angle there? Or this will be.
Isn't it hundred and eighty minus?
Oh, a hundred and eighty minus theta, yeah, okay, that makes sense, yeah, a hundred and eighty minus theta. Okay, good. Um, that's good, and that is the first torque, okay? Is it causing a positive or negative torque? It's causing a, what was it? So it's causing a torque like this, which is a. Uh, uh, which way do clocks go? Clockwise torque, um, and that's positive, I'm pretty sure. So that's our first torque for the sum of the torques. MGL sine one eighty.
Sorry, wouldn't it be negative now? Because um, I remember for the physical pendulum, we have uh minus mg D. Minus gravity di- uh delta, or sorry, distance over inertia, so. And that was going clockwise in that case, so wouldn't it be negative?
Wait, but this is. Are you saying because of, because of the force is acting down?
No, because it's going clockwise, I think it should be uh negative instead of positive.
Yeah, I forget which one's which one's which, is clockwise negative?
That's what I remember it being negative, I mean, someone could clarify.
Someone else chime in, do they remember it as well?
Uh, yes, it's negative.
As long as you're consistent, it doesn't really.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's say, okay, that's going negative, and then the other one is going to be a positive form, so it's the buoyant force. Which we know the buoyant force is this, so that's the buoyant force, okay, so. The, the um, so minus, oh no, this is plus actually, the density of air. Right? Air times VG times the distance between them, that's L again. And sine of, sine of this angle now. Um, sine of this angle. Right? So this angle here is just phi, uh, is just theta. So this is just sine of, where did black go there? Sine of theta, this is equal to IA. And what are we solving for? Yeah, we're solving for, we're trying to make it look like. The differential equation, right? So this is gonna end up being negative MGL. Sin one eighty minus theta plus density of air. Times VG L sine theta equals I is. The mass of the helium times L, the mass of the helium times L squared. Times alpha, so I just divide. By mass of the helium times L squared. So that's that. So now. I want to get the function of theta by itself over here. One eighty minus theta, sine of one eighty minus theta, is that on my board here? Yes, it is, that's just equal to sine theta. So sine of one eighty minus theta is equal to sine theta. That's convenient, so this is just equal to sine theta. Straight sine theta, oops, that's an eight, not theta. Um, and then I can factor out my, I can factor out my um. What's it called? Sine theta, so it's just going to be, s- uh, well, I guess I'll call it here, say sine. No, write it here. Sine theta equals alpha, and so I'm factoring out to this side. So this is going to be uh negative, and I'll write it like this, uh, density of air VG L. Sin theta minus MGL sine theta. Over mass of helium times L squared. Nope, sorry, both of these sine thetas are factored out. Okay, uh, I can take out a L, I guess, from the top, there we go. And then I can uh factor out a negative, right? So it's gonna be negative. MG minus the density of air times VG over M H E L. And the small angle approximation, sine theta equals theta. We are engineers and. Um, and so then now we have it in the form of D squared theta over D. D what squared? DT squared. Equals negative something theta, there we go. We know that, um, what are we supposed to do? Treat the balloon. Find the constant in terms of the density, well, let's just find the constant, so the constant is gonna be the square root of this. MG minus density of air VG over then, uh, the mass of helium times L. So we want it in terms of the density of helium, density of air, density of helium, a density of air, not density of helium, but we'll get there. This is the mass of. This is the mass of the uh helium. Yes, that's the mass of the helium. Uh, the density of air, G and L. Anything else we don't want in there? Yeah, well, we have the two masses here, we don't want these masses of helium. So can we say, did they let us use V? No, they didn't let us use V. Well, oh, okay, 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 because the density, uh, no. The density of air. Times. V. That would give us the mass of air.
Yeah, you're right, that's what they did, yeah, that's where I got stuck too. So mass equals density times volume, I think that's what they did.
But I'm not allowed to use volume. Oh, I guess I can just say, I can just say density, okay, density of helium times volume, which is the same as the volume of air. And mass equals, I mean, the mass equals density of helium times the volume, and then these all cancel. So it turns into density of helium times G minus density of air times G. Over density of helium times L. Which is density, yeah, which is what they want. So there you go. There is our phase constant. Okay. Um, and, okay, give me one second, here, gonna answer a text. Okay, so the next part that we're gonna do, so that was part C, so. Let's look at part D. And that's it? It's only part D, that's the last of the question? I think so, that's all I have here, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
That's it, okay, so determine the period of motion of the balloon, hint, compare the equation you wrote in the previous part to the, to a simple pendulum. So the period of motion is. Two, two pi over omega. So. Two pi over. This. Are we supposed to have number answers?
Yeah, the last one is a number, we can check if we're right.
Two pi over that, oh, we know these numbers, we know all of them. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, we know all of them, so two. It's the density of helium, okay. So let me write all the things here, density of helium is that, and density of air is that. And length is something, and G is nine point eight one, so length is. Five point oh nine. I can't remember more than one number at the same time, zero point one seven nine. And. Uh, one point eighteen. Okay, so we just punch this all in, so two pi over square root of. Density of helium, zero point one seven nine times nine point eight one. Um, minus the density of air, one point eighteen. One point eighteen times nine point eight one. All over the density of helium, which is zero point one seven nine, times the length, which is five point oh nine. Okay, so fraction, two pi is on the top, the bottom is the square root of. Zero point one seven, oops, zero point one seven nine. Times nine point eight one. Minus one point eighteen times nine point eight one over zero point one seven nine times five point oh nine. And math error. Did I get a negative number? Yes, I guess I got a negative number in there. Yes, that's not good. Density of helium. Density of helium is the last, yep, makes sense. Yeah, this is gonna be a negative number up here. So. That's the mass, is that the mass of helium? That is the mass of helium. Yeah, the problem is is that we get negative, this is a negative number on the top.
Uh, you got the right answer when you switched density of air with the density of helium.
Like my numbers are up?
No, no, like, and the denominator, you where you wrote um density of helium minus density of air.
So this is supposed to be air, and this is helium?
I don't know why, but that works.
So essentially, the, this was helium, this was air, so essentially. Negative this.
Yeah.
Uh, I know why, can you go up?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, when you, uh, just a little bit more, yeah, when you were converting, when you're doing the square root of that. You didn't, uh, you like took out the negative right there, and the, the.
This negative doesn't come with it, this negative doesn't come with it.
Why not?
That doesn't come with it, it stays, here, I explained this in, I explained this in uh. Uh. Where is it? Oh no, I did it in homework help today, if you scroll, okay, no, it's too far now, it's, it's, the chat's gone, oh no, there it is, I see it, so. Someone asked the same question, it's just sort of like a formula that, that's like the formula, is when you have this in the form. When you have this in the form, negative K Y equals D squared Y over D T squared. The solution to this is the cos, the, the harmonic oscillator, and the omega value, the omega value is the square root of K. The square root of K, not square root of negative K, square root of K. Right? So yeah, we, that, that, that negative doesn't come with. So I am still off by a negative though. Then maybe. Well. Wouldn't. That fix it? That shouldn't fix it, but wouldn't that fix it? Because then this is that, this is. That. And then this is square root of negative that plus that. So square root of negative that plus that. Wouldn't that fix it? If I just made the opposite assumption, that, because we said, we said. Clockwise is negative, counterclockwise is positive. But if I just made the opposite assumption, I would get the right answer. Because then this would be negative, and this would be positive, and this would be negative, and this would be positive, and then I would say. I would get one point ninety one. Is that the answer? I think so, because someone said that we get the right answer.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. So making the opposite assumption of what we usually do is the thing that's getting us the right answer. But it got us the answer, I guess. Well, there's that question. So whenever you wanna, whenever the question asks you to show that something is a harmonic oscillator, you need to show. That you can write its forces in the fo- in the form of this, or its torques, if it's a, if it's a pendulum. Or something that resembles a pendulum, you need to show that you can write it in that form, and if you can, then it's a harmonic oscillator, and. Or, yeah, it's a harmonic oscillator, and it um. It. Has a omega of that constant, not the negative of that constant, but it just has that constant. Yeah.
Adam.
Yeah.
Could you explain why um for the period? Uh, so, so you basically just, uh, I'm just wondering why we treat like the angular acceleration alpha the same as we do omega, like for example. The period is two pi over omega, and we use like our alpha, which is angular acceleration?
Sorry, but what's, what's your, we use omega here, like we use this formula, sorry, I don't think I got your question, what was it?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so uh how does, like, om- so omega is the same thing as, uh, in this scenario for this oscillator. It's the same thing as our, as our angular acceleration, basically.
Our angular frequency, our angular frequency. Not our angular acceleration, this is our angular acceleration here.
Yeah.
Right, and that's equal to omega squared, negative omega squared theta.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Right, so it's not exactly equal, there's still, this is, this is omega, this is omega squared. Because omega is.
That makes sense, yeah, okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay. Okay, I think I'm gonna take a ten minute break, because I'm a little tired, I'm gonna get a glass of water, maybe a snack, I have some. Cheesy Ritz crackers, so I'll be enjoying those, um, but yeah, let's take ten minutes, and then um. We will continue, maybe let's, let's do some, let's do some, what's it called, Doppler effect questions after this, okay? So ten minute break. I will.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, can you just scroll up to the question so I could take a picture before you go?
Of here?
Yeah.
I think it's in the chat, it might be in the chat, so.
Oh, is it? Alright, yeah, cool, 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 let's just take it.
Are you going to? Are you gonna be going to eight thirty or nine?
I can, I'll go to nine, it says eight thirty, but I'll go to nine at least, but yeah, we'll go past that, it's the day before the test, so whatever, we just get everything done. Right?
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm expecting to go at least until nine, so yeah, let's take a, let's take a ten minute break, and uh I will be back momentarily. So back, not at seven thirty-five. Back at. Okay, so, back soon. What's going on in everyone?
Shut up, Michelle. Okay, I love you.
Um. Let's get going. Back to it. There I am. Hello, good. Okay, so you know, I'll put the, okay, here for a second, I'll put the glasses back on. Okay, so let us um. Let us start doing some of the Doppler effect question. Yeah.
For you start, I just had a doubt in the previous question.
Yeah.
The before the helium balloon one.
The which one, sorry, this this here?
One before the helium balloon.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah, just because the end, the velocity part. I mean, the distance part, yeah, how do you calculate the velocity in this?
The velocity is from up here, velocity is lambda over T, which is omega over K. Which is this forty five.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, so let me choose a, I didn't actually choose a question yet, so let me. Do that for the Doppler effect, or let's just see what the next one would be if we just kept going normally through the questions, number thirty-two. Uh, it doesn't have numbers, so I think they're gonna give us number quite, let's see, number thirty-three. This is a web assign problem, I'm pretty sure. This one, let's just see it. So this one here. Was it? I remember doing it, and I think I remember having confused about the painful to hear part. Is that right?
Yeah, this was a web assigned one.
This was a web assigned problem, so should I do it? What do people think? I think I'll do it. Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty quick ones, we should be able to do it like five minutes.
Sure, okay.
This is like a Doppler effect, right?
This, this one's not a Doppler effect, this is just a, like, just a decibel one, this is just like. That stuff, yeah, which I actually realized, I don't have the chart of like what's painful, I should really write that down somewhere, I don't know what's. Levels are painful, but anyway, so suppose we have a speaker, suppose it broadcasts equally in all directions, within what distance from the speaker with the, with the sound be painful to hear? Is in, as in like what's, at what distance would the intensity be a certain amount? Right, well. There's some level. Of intensity, I think. That makes. I don't have the numbers, no, it's in the other book.
One twenty.
One twenty, um.
Decibels, I think.
One twenty, yeah, decibels, uh, decibels, like that, um, okay, sure. So let's take a look here. So intensity. Yeah, so intensity equals power. Over area, uh, power over area, but four pi R squared. Four pi R squared, uh, power over four pi R squared. The power is this. Is six watts. So that's the intensity of that. Based on some distance. And one twenty decibels is what we have, so remember a decibel. Is ten log base ten of the intensity, which is six over four pi R squared over I not. Just the standard intensity thing. Uh, so you said one twenty decibels is the painful to hear. Uh, painful to hear decimal number, so if I just put that in, then we have one equation, one un- one unknown. Four pi R squared over I not, and we can just solve this. So this is twelve equals log base ten of three over two pi R squared over. I not, so this is ten to the twelve equals three over, well, three over two pi R squared over. I not. Right, so multiple, multiply both sides by I not, that's I not. Ten to the twelve equals three over two pi R squared. Um, this is, I not is ten to the negative twelve. So this is ten to the zero. Which is one. So one equals two pi R squared over three. Right, so, um, uh, three over two pi equals R squared. So the square root of three over two pi equals R. Square root of three over two pi equals R, so that's zero point six nine one. Meters. And let's check if that is correct, thirty-three for chapter seventeen. No, for, for chapter, for chapter sixty, yeah, thirty-three for chapter sixteen.
Sorry, could you scroll all over?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Good. Uh, and then for part B, at what distance from the speaker would the sound be barely audible? Well, what's the barely audible level? Does someone know?
Zero is what I think what I wanted you to put.
Oh, I guess, I guess it would be zero.
Intensity is ten to the negative twelve.
Yeah.
I not, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Which I use.
No, I, that, that's for barely audible, like, that's the intensity.
Oh, that's the intensity is that the intensity is ten to the negative twelve?
Yeah, for barely audible.
So then I could just say, I could just say ten to the negative twelve equals. Because what's? Yeah, 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 which is the same thing as saying, which is the same thing as saying zero decibels, so. Let me just do that with with zero decibels, and it may make more sense, but it is the same thing, so zero equals, um, not equals. Uh, log ten. I not, uh, so I over I not. Right, and so this is just zero equals log base ten of I over I not. Right, so this is going to be, um. Uh, ten to the power zero equals I over I not. Right, and this is just going to be, so that's just one. So I equals I not equals ten to the negative twelve, so we know I is ten to the negative twelve, which is same thing that. She just said, right, so then we can have, now we know that intensity. We know that intensity is the, uh, power over four pi R squared. So ten to the negative twelve equals six over four pi R squared. Right, so this is three halves, and, uh, well, flipped us over, so it's gonna be, um, one over ten, well. This is already, so this is ten to the twelve equals three, no, two pi R squared over three. And then we have three times ten to the twelve over two pi in a square root equals R. So three times ten to the twelve over two pi. In a square root, so six hundred ninety, six hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight point three meters. Uh, yes, which is the answer, six hundred ninety-one kilometers is the answer, which is pretty much the same thing.
Uh, alright, I got a completely off topic question, it was about the last example that we did, when we were given F B equals. Is that telling us the force of the buoyancy or the force, um, of the whole balloon itself?
Buoyancy, buoyancy, buoyancy.
Okay, just the buoyancy.
Yeah. Yeah, not, not, not all the force is acting on the balloon, no, no, just the force of buoyancy is that. Okay, there we go, we did that question, that wasn't too bad, let's try, that was number thirty-three, let's see what's thirty-five. See what's thirty-five, so. Thirty-five is a big one.
Thirty-five, yeah, thirty-five is a big one.
Uh. Should we try it?
If you're willing to read it out. If you're willing to read.
It's pretty simple, actually.
Is it? I like hearing that.
It's this really long, like, background information that is kinda useless.
This is just the first screenshot, there's two screenshots. Uh. There, so I'll make this. A little bigger. So.
It's pretty confusing, I, I tried to figure it out, but I don't think, like, it's, yeah, it's tricky.
Okay, let's give it a try, you are working at an open air amphitheater where the rock concert, where rocker, rock concerts occur regularly. The venue has powerful loudspeakers mounted on six point one meter tall columns at various locations surrounding the audience. The loudspeakers emit sound uniformly in all directions, there are ladder steps sticking out from the columns to help service workers. Help workers service loudspeakers. Many times, audience members break through the protective fencing around the columns and climb upwards to the columns to get a better view of the performers. The upcoming concert is by a group that states that several high volume pulses of sound occur in their concerts, and these sounds are part of their artistic expression. The amphitheater owners are worried about people climbing the columns and being too close to loudspeakers, when these. When these peak sounds are admitted, they do not want to be held responsible for injuries to audience members' ears. Based on past performance of the group, you can determine the peak sound level to be a hundred and fifty decibels. Alright, so I just measured twenty meters, twenty centimeters from the. Speakers to, on the columns, the owners ask you to determine the heights on the columns at which to mount. Impassable barricades to keep people from getting too close to the speakers and hearing sound above the threshold of pain. Okay. So. Okay. First of all, one fifty equals ten log base ten of the intensity over I not, right? Well, the intensity. Measured twenty meters away, so the intensity is the sum power that's outputted. Right, some power that's outputted over four pi R squared, although we know R, right, we know R squared. We don't know the power that's outputted. But that's okay, I think, because now we can say that, um, we know the decibel is, well, actually, hold on. Oh, no, we can just, we could just solve for the power. Here, yeah, we could just solve for the power. Okay, so then once we get the power, the owners ask you to determine the heights on the, we wanna figure out the distance. R that gets us one twenty decibels, yeah, we can just solve, so we just solve for P now, the power of the, of the thing, and this is gonna be fifteen equals. Log base ten of P over four pi R squared. We know R also, over I not, so ten to the fifteen equals, I'll put I not here right away. P over four. I R squared. Um, and so then, well, I guess right away I can also do this, so it's gonna be four pi R squared I not, ten to the fifteen equals P. So that's going to be. Four pi zero point two squared, ten to the negative twelve. Ten to the fifteen equals P, so this would just be ten to the three. So this is four pi. Zero point two squared times ten to the power three. Um, and then, uh, this is going to be, the power now is one sixty pi, so we have five. Hundred and two point sixty-five watts equals the power, so now. From here, we know the power, well, I'm just asking now, what distance will get me a decibel level of, what was it, a hundred and twenty was the pain threshold? Hundred and twenty, yeah. So one twenty equals ten log base ten of, uh, so the power, we already said it was, well, I'll leave it as P. P over four pi R squared over I, I not, but this time we're solving for R, it's the same thing, we're solving for R, so twelve equals. Log base ten of P over four pi R squared over I not. So this is I not, ten to the twelve equals P over four pi R squared. Yep, so, uh, this cancels into a one. Right, one equals P over four pi R squared, and so this is going to be one equals four pi R squared over P. So, um, P over four pi in a square root equals R. So that's five oh two point sixty-five. Five oh two point sixty-five over four pi equals R in a square root. So it's the square root of the last answer times divided by four pi. So I get. Six point thirty-two meters. And this was number thirty-five. And this was number thirty-five. Not the answer, okay. So.
It'd be like your hypotenuse, if you had like a triangle going upwards probably.
Oh, you know what, oh, you know what, thirty. Oh, boy, what? Oh, okay, what's the answer, thirty-five, four point? Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, 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 okay. Someone has a mic on, I hear. Someone has a mic on, I hear. Okay, um so uh the answer is right, this is the distance from the speaker. But the question is, how far up the stairs, the owner asks you to determine the height on this, height on the columns to which. At which to mount the impassable barricades, so if the speaker is ten point six meters tall. And we wanna be six point, what was it, six point thirty-two meters away from it? We actually, the answer is this distance, which is ten minus six point thirty-two, which is four point twenty-eight meters, and that's the actual answer to the question. Right, to the the way the question was worded, it's four point twenty-eight meters. And that's the answer in the book. So that's good. Um so, yeah, any questions about this one, number thirty-five? Okay, if not, I will move on to thirty-seven, I guess we're just doing the questions now. We're just, we're just doing the practice questions. We'll get to Doppler effect, actually, this is the last non-Doppler effect question. Okay, show that the difference between decibel levels B one and B two of the se- of a sound is related to the ratio of the distances. So show that this is true. Okay. The difference in the decibel levels, okay, well, if. We're saying B, we're trying to show that B two minus B one, trying to show this is true, okay, so I'm gonna start with the left side. B two can be written as um is gonna be ten. Log base ten of the intensity, two decibel levels of sounds related to the ratio. Uh which is, okay, which is gonna be the power over four pi R squared, R two squared for B two. Over I not minus ten log base ten of. P over four pi R squared, that's R one squared over I not. Okay, uh factor out a ten, so it's gonna be ten times log base. Uh log base ten of, okay, and also of what, well, it's gonna be P over. Four pi R squared, R one squared. Okay, it's gonna be hard to write. Big fraction, big fraction, big fractions. Okay, so. Okay, so this is what I'm about to write. And one more, okay, so here we have P four pi R two squared. Over I not, this is P over four pi R one squared over. I not. Log rules, right, you're subtracting logs, so of the same base, so you can just cancel, so this, this. This will cancel. And we're just left with ten. Log base ten of R two over R one. Squared. Which can be written as twenty log base ten of R two minus R one. Which equals the right hand side. So that's that. Any questions about that? That wasn't really a physics question, it was just sort of a. Math question, know how to use logs. Okay, our next one is a Doppler effect question. Which I think I saw in some chat and was confused by, so let's. Anybody, someone got a question?
Somebody's got a tingling sensation, I'm gonna need.
Okay.
You might mute it.
Someone's got an unmuted mic.
I think, I think I muted.
Okay. No. Never mind. Okay, there we go, we're good, okay, so here's the this question, uh. A block with a speaker bolted to it is connected to a spring, having a spring constant. That and oscillates at that, wow, what a physics question. The total mass of the block and the speaker is that, have the amplitude and the amplitude of this unit's motion is that. The speaker emits sound waves of that frequency, determine the highest and the lowest frequencies heard by the person. To the right of the speaker. Okay, this isn't actually that, so K. Equals twenty. Pounds per meter, uh the frequency is four forty hertz. Right, the amplitude is zero point five meters, the mass. Uh. Yeah, the mass equals um five kilograms, okay, and that's everything we need to know. So when does the highest frequency happen? The highest frequency happens when the speaker is going towards the person with the highest velocity. Right, that's when the highest frequency happens, I think, no. Yes, that's when the highest frequency happens, when the speaker is moving towards the person with the highest velocity, okay, now our next question is, what's what's the highest velocity? Of the spring, well, we have a formula for that, V max, right, V max is A omega. We know A, and remember that omega is equal to the square root of K over M. Right, so V max is A times the square root of K over M. Which is zero point five times the square root of twenty over zero point five. Okay, so let's figure out our V max, zero point five times the square root of twenty over zero point five. Is root ten, which is three point one six, that's our V max, so now, what's the frequency heard? Right, and so then this the, the the lowest frequency heard is when the speaker is moving away at the highest velocity. Right, so let's do the highest highest frequency first, okay, let's first of all, let's let's get our Doppler effect question, uh uh formula, Doppler effect formula. Um, yeah.
Wait, isn't the mass uh five?
Isn't it five kilograms?
So then it'd be twenty over five, that's square root.
Oh, yeah.
Times.
Why did I say zero point five, I was looking at amplitude, I guess.
How is the, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So it's just one, V max is just one. How is it just one, oh, okay. That's, that's two? Oh, it's two, okay, yeah, of course, nevermind, so let's see, let's get our formula, so F of the observer is equal to the F of the source. Times the velocity, the speed of sound in air, the velocity of the observer, the velocity of speed of like the speed of sound in air. And the velocity of the source, okay, so for the highest velocity, for the highest frequency observed by the observer, we take the. Um the source frequency, four forty. Playing a nice A, and then we take the speed of sound in air, which I do not know, does someone know, three thirty-one, I think?
Three forty-three.
Three forty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right? Okay.
You did yesterday, by the way.
Okay, sounds good, uh V not is the velocity of the observer, not be not, which is zero, then we take three forty-three minus the velocity of the. Um of the thing, of the um. Uh source, so the velocity of the source is one in that moment, right? So it's just going to be four forty, I'm, well, it's just going to be something, so what's that, something, four forty.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, but why is the velocity zero, like the V O?
Cause he's not moving, he's not moving. That's the velocity of the observer. Right? So I got, he is seeing a frequency of four forty-one point three hertz. See, number forty-one is four forty-one, yep, there we go, we're good, and then the lowest is the same equation. The same, in fact, it's the same equation up to here, and for the lowest, it's just four forty times three forty-three over. Three forty-three plus one, because it's it's gonna be V S, the velocity of the source is gonna be negative, it's gonna be negative one. Because you're moving away, you're gonna be, velocity is negative one, so negative, negative one is plus one, so. The new, I mean, the new frequency observed is. Uh four thirty-eight point seven, four thirty-nine, yeah. And there we go, which makes sense, this is a increase of one point three and this is a decrease of one point three. And there you go, that's A and B. C is if the maximum sound level heard by the person is ten, uh sixty decibels, when the speaker is at its closest distance. Okay, what is the minimum sound level heard by the observer? Okay, so. It's closest when he's one meter away, the amplitude is a half, so the furthest it goes away from him is two meters away. Right, because it, the amplitude is a half, so it's gonna be two of them. That's a half a meter, half a meter, so the furthest distance it goes away from him is two meters away, right? So I'll write that here, so for part C, furthest. Distance. Is, is two meters, okay. Well, now we need to figure out what sound level is heard two meters away, right, so what sound level is heard two meters, so what's the decibel? Of ten log base ten of I over I not. Right, and I we know is the power over four pi R squared. We know everything here except R, I mean, except P, we know R, R is two, right, so what's P? Well, we find P by this first information that they give us here, right, which which is that sixty decibels when it's a distance of one. So we can find the power now, I'm gonna rearrange this for power now without um. Doing it, so it's gonna be B over ten to the, ten to the power of B over ten equals times I not. Equals P over four pi R squared, so finally, P equals. Four pi R squared I not ten to the power of B over ten. So we can plug everything in we know for the specific situation, which is that it's four pi one meter squared. I not is ten to the negative twelve, and this is ten to the one sixty, or was it sixty? It was just sixty, not one sixty. So ten to the sixty over. Uh over ten. And that'll be our power, so, well, sixty over ten is six. Ten to the six, so this is just ten to the negative six. And the one doesn't do anything, so it's, so it's four pi over ten to the six. So I got the power is uh one point two six times ten to the negative five. So that's our power, and now I can just go in here, right, and I can just solve for decibels with with what we know. So maybe I'll actually, I'll rewrite it down here. So now that we know the power, I can just, we're we're asking, what volume will he hear, right, when it's two meters away? Which we can just plug everything in and solve, so ten log base ten of one point two. Six times ten to the negative five over four pi two meters squared, right, two is the distance, the furthest distance that the speaker gets from him. And I not is 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 a ten to the negative twelve. So ten log base ten of. Something over something. So one point two six times ten to the negative five over. Four times pi times two squared over ten to the negative twelve, so I got. Uh that equals fifty-four decibels. Which is correct. So any questions about this one?
Um, I have a question.
Yeah?
Sir, um for the.
Yeah, you can go, yeah, yeah, go go for it.
Okay, thank you, um for the part where um you're checking for like the highest frequency. Um, why did you subtract the um um velocity of the source if it's coming towards the person?
Well, when you're talking about Doppler effect, the sign on the velocities are just if they're heading towards each other or not, right, so.
Yeah.
Since this speaker is heading towards him, when you're doing the the Doppler effect calculation, it's a positive velocity.
So then, uh why do you subtract it?
Because the formula is is V minus V S.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then in the final one, and then finally, it's a, for when I'm finding the furthest distance, it's a negative velocity, so I'm adding one.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay, another question?
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure I know why you were confused about the speed of sound, because at zero degrees, it's three thirty-one. And at degrees, it's three forty-three, but in this chapter, what you did yesterday, they said, assume for the rest of the questions that it's three forty-three. So if they don't give us the temperature, I guess that's what we have to assume.
I guess so, I guess so, so I'll write that here, they don't give you a temperature, the speed of sound is, well, speed of. Sound in air is three forty-three. Meters per second, they don't give you a temperature.
In the web design though?
As a formula, yeah.
In the web design, they, they like, you had to use two thirty-one, which is weird, so I wonder what the cops wanna see.
Maybe we could ask him, yeah, uh the formula is, I don't know if I have the formula. I do, it's right here. V equals three thirty-one times the square root of one plus the temperature in Celsius over two seventy-three degrees Celsius. Two seventy-three, whatever. Just the temperature in Celsius, so that's the formula, if you know the temperature. So next we have, that was forty-one, so let's look at forty-two.
Actually, could you scroll that over?
Yeah.
To the last part.
Here?
Of this, oh no, the next.
Up a little bit?
The little portion, I think, not down.
Down, that's right, here.
Oh, is that all of it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is.
Wait, sorry. No, we did, wh- why was the furthest distance two?
Because, because the, it says that the this, this mass is oscillating with an amplitude of zero, uh of a half. Right, so the closest point it gets is one meter away from him, it says that. Closest distance, one meter, so the furthest distance would be two times the amplitude. Two amplitudes away.
Okay, awesome, yeah, I'm headed to that, thank you.
Right, okay, no.
The second time, when you put the power, that's when you use um two as R.
That's right, first time I was solving for R, I think, no, 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 I was solving for P, the first time I put one in for R, because it was a distance of one away.
Okay.
But the second time, when I was solving for the decibels, yeah, then I put in two. Right? Okay, I've got another one, oh, this is, I guess, just the same question, but in general? Highest and lowest frequencies, yeah, this is just the same question, but in general, so I can write. Um determine the highest and, well, okay, here, that's for up here. That would just be. Okay, it's the same question, but in general, so F not, uh F, F of the observer equals F of the source times the speed of sound, which is always V. Right, uh, does it? Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't happen, no, no, minus the speed of the observer, well, that's just zero, okay? Is this really the same question? Yeah, it is, cuz it says the same figure. Yeah, that's right, so the observer is seated, okay, then this is V minus the speed of the, the, well, the maximum speed of the um. Thing, of the oscillating mass, which we said was A omega, which is A square root of K over M, right? So minus A square root of K over M. And this will be, this will be the answer, this will be your highest, your lowest will be the same thing. So F naught equals F S um, times V over V minus, sorry, this time it's plus, that's the only difference. Because this is just gonna be a negative number, right? Sorry, this is just gonna be a negative number, the negative of the velocity, because you're going away. And that's that. It's just asking the last question, but in general, that's all it's asking. Um, if the maximum sound level heard by the person is beta when the speaker is at its closest distance to, to D from him. What is the minimum sound level heard? Well, the minimum sound level heard is ten log base ten of. The power, which we set up here, the power is this, right? So this. Over. Over four pi R squared over I naught. So luckily. That, 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 that cancels. So this is beta equals ten log base ten of ten to the B over ten. Well, this is nice, beta equals, oh, this might not be nice, what's it gonna happen? Beta over ten times ten. Oh, what? Yeah, beta equals beta.
Uh. Nice math, bro.
Beta does equal beta. Well, first of all, these are different betas, just to be clear, this is our farthest beta, and this is our closest beta. So closest beta, farthest beta, farthest beta, closest beta, farthest beta, closest beta. That's not the answer we got for the last one, fifty four, pretty close, but not sixty. Oh no, but it wouldn't even, that doesn't even make sense, why would it be the same? Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't. It wouldn't be the same. Okay, is it because I'm subbing the same equation back into the other equation? Yes, it is, it is, yes, it is. It is, uh, these are not the same Rs. That's the problem. That's the problem there. So this is. Okay, I'll, I'll do it in a second, but this is the power, this R is the closest R, and this R is the furthest R. So these I naughts still cancel, and the four pi still cancels. But what I have is that BF equals ten log base ten of. The closest radius squared times ten to the B over ten, the closest B ten, over ten. Are the furthest radius squared. Yep. Yep, so now. I could continue. I can continue, because, because I know that RF equals RC plus two A.
We can split the log too.
We can split the log. Don't particularly want to do this, because I'm gonna have to square it. So instead of squaring it. I am going to do this. That is the same. Do you see what I did? I switched the denominator here, here to ten, so this is squared, right, this is all squared now. And then got rid of the squared, brought it out, so it's gonna be twenty log base ten of RC. Times ten to the B C over twenty. Over RC plus two A. And now, I don't know, is that, I mean, I, I know I can split them, but does the question really want me to split them? Oh, there's no answer for this. I'll stop there, I guess, there's, yeah, I can split them, but then I'd kinda be making it more complicated, so. I'm just gonna stop there. Uh, you didn't have to do that last step with the squaring, I mean, you could, I guess. I mean, we did it, like, you could. Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess you, you, you could, like, like, it would be part of the.
Split it, if you split it, the twenty will cancel, and then you'll be left with only a bunch of R's.
Oh, you're right, okay, yeah, so twenty log base ten of RC. Well, careful, no, no, the, the twenty won't cancel, cuz this exponent can't come down. Uh, cuz this is not to the power of B C over twenty.
No, no, but they're being multiplied, so you can split it by adding.
Oh, they're split by adding, okay, yeah, 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 so this is log. This is twenty log base ten of RC plus B C log base ten of ten, which is one. Minus log twenty, twenty log base, oh, this is gonna cancel, ten of RC. Plus, no, minus, two, no, minus twenty log base two, base ten of two A.
Uh, I don't think you can, can you split that? Cuz it's a plus, right?
Oh, you're right, yeah, nevermind. I thought I was, I thought I was onto something nice, but no, if only those could cancel. That's the simplest one then. That's the simplest one. Okay, so that's forty two then. Let's look at the next one.
Yeah, so I got a question, um, but it's a, like, it's, it's about a question that we did pretty far back, so do you think?
Okay.
It's best that I just, I'll often just insert it later?
Yeah, maybe, is that okay, let's, let's do it at the end, I guess?
Yeah, I'm completely fine with that, just wanna know.
Well, I guess, let's do like, let's do two more questions, and then that, I think, will be it for today, cuz we pretty much covered. All of the chapter fifteen, chapter sixteen, we're on Doppler effect now, so let's do two more questions. Um, and then I'll just, you know, answer little questions from people, like, two more big problems, and then I'll still be here to answer questions, but. Two more actual problem solvings, so. Let's take a look at, that was forty two. Yeah, so the next ones are additional problems, so let's see if those are difficult. So. This. Was here, okay, so a sinusoidal wave, oh no, I think I. Oh no, nevermind, I don't think we've done this before. So a sinusoidal wave in a rope is described by the wave function that where X and Y are in meters and T is in seconds, the rope has a linear mass density of zero point two five kilograms per meter, the tension in the rope. Is provided by an arrangement like the one in sixteen point three. I have to go find sixteen point three now. Or sixteen point, whatever, sixteen point. Sixteen point what? Uh, thirteen. What, sixteen, figure P sixteen, oh, pro- in the problem set, is that what that means? Yeah. P sixteen point. I don't know what P sixteen point three is. Or sixteen point thirteen, I'm saying the wrong number, but.
Picture.
But none of them are labeled, only some of them are labeled with a P, and some of them are labeled just with a number. So let's find sixteen.
Sixteen point thirteen is in question thirteen.
Oh, it's in question thirteen? Oh, good, okay, yeah, I see it. Okay. There we go. What is the mass of the suspended object? Okay, um, well. We can find the speed, okay, the tension in the rope is provided by the arrangement like that, so we, we're probably gonna use this equation. T over, um, the linear mass density. So, well. I know that the linear mass density is mass per length, don't have length. You don't have length.
Given the value.
Oh, but yeah, but hold on, T, T is gonna be.
We can find a V using omega and K, and then use that to find out T.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Then use that to find out mass.
But, yeah, T is MG, so this is gonna be V equals square root of MG over. Uh, M over L, so those will cancel.
Turn it to mu.
No, no, those are not, those will not cancel.
We don't need to do this.
Make it the mass density.
The equation gives us omega and K, right? Use that to find out the V. Then.
Yeah, yeah.
T.
Well, you can do that, just change the M L to, um, mass density. Cuz that's V square root of T over mass, yeah, and then you can just put the MG, and then we'll cancel, and solve for it.
Oh, put, oh, put MG here, oh, okay, put MG there, yeah, 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 okay, no, no, I was just confused.
Which have V?
V squared, well, I can solve for it. Equals G, so over G, and V is just omega over K squared. So there we go.
Yeah, so where did that L go? Cuz you know how we just had G over L?
Yeah, yeah, M over L, and that was just me, that would, L would have been this, but we don't need it, we don't need it at all.
It's the same thing, see how it says like linear mass density, it's like.
We just know this number, I was going in the wrong direction there, so, yeah, uh, we don't even know, L is, we don't know it, and we don't need it. So I can just plug this in, this is omega, so this is K, so it's eighteen pi squared over zero point seven pi. Well, I could have written like that, probably better. Times zero point two five over nine point eight one, and that'll be it. And this is eighteen pi over zero point seven five pi. Okay, fourteen point sixty eight, uh, kilograms, I guess. Let's take a look, if that's the answer. Fourteen point seven, yep, we're good. Okay. And I'll do one more question. Forty seven or fifty two. Let's take a look which one's better. Fifty two looks too complicated, so let's take a look at forty seven, fifty looks overly complicated, not something we're gonna have on the test. Actually, fifty two is just math, there's no physics, it's just rearranging a formula. So it's not actually that bad, but, okay, and then this was forty, did I say forty seven? Forty seven, yeah.
Yo, sorry, I, I just brain farted, I just got a question, so.
Yeah.
Is omega equal to two pi over T?
Omega is two pi over T, yeah?
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure.
Well, let me check that. Omega is two pi over T, that's correct.
Alright, alright.
Um, okay, let's try this question, although it seems kind of similar to the last one, let's just, let's see.
You know you're an engineer when you look at formulasheet to confirm it?
Yes, exactly. So.
I don't engineer if you Google it.
So a sinusoidal wave in a string is described by the wave function that where X and T, X and Y are in meters and T is in seconds, the mass per length of the string is that grams per meter, find the maximum transverse acceleration of an element of the string. Okay, that's not bad. Maximum transverse acceleration is A omega squared. So A max equals A omega squared, which is zero point fifteen times fifty squared. Which is three seventy five. Okay, um, determine the maximum transverse force on a one centimeter segment of string. Okay, well, I think we just do F equals M A, and, um, so. We're looking for F, so M is density times volume. Right, yeah? Or density times length, I guess we can just say, density times length, because we know the mass per length. So, times A, so this is going to be density is zero point twelve. No, what is it, twelve, times one centimeter? Okay, well, we gotta convert units here, so twelve to grams, to kilograms is twelve over a thousand. Times length, which is centimeters to meters, is gonna be zero point zero one, it was one centimeter, yeah? Times three seventy five equals. Twelve over one thousand times zero point zero one times three seventy five. So I got the maximum force is zero point zero four five Newtons.
So just to clarify, what you just said right there is you found the mass by, because it, be- because, uh, what was it called, mu is mass over length, right? So if you multiply by the length, which was one centimeter that was told, they cancel out in your, of mass.
Yeah, because the mu is, I should have, should have called this mu, actually. Mu is the mass per length, how much does one meter weigh? One meter of this rope, uh, how, one meter of this rope weigh? So I just multiply that by the length of rope that I have, which is one centimeter, and that'll get me, yeah, it'll cancel, like you're saying.
Alright.
What'd you say, oh yeah, makes sense?
No, yeah, yeah, I'm good, so that is, or there's part C as well.
Part C, yeah, state how the force found in part B compares to the, with the tension in the spring. So the tension in the spring is going to be a V equals, uh, the square root of. T over, what was it, T over the density? Uh, then it's gonna be V squared mu equals T, so V squared is omega squared over K squared. Times mu equals T, so omega is fifty, mu is zero point five, so, or zero point eight. So fifty squared over zero point eight. Squared times, um, kilograms, so it's gonna be, uh, twelve over a thousand equals tension. Fifty squared over zero point eight squared times twelve over a thousand. Is forty, forty six. Point eight seven five. Which I will just check if that's the answer. Yeah, so the maximum transverse force is very small compared to the tension of the string, more than a thousand times smaller. That's just the answer in the book. Okay, well, I think that'll be the last full question I do, but I'm here to answer any little questions.
Yeah, uh, does anyone wanna go first, or?
Well, just before, before anyone goes, I was just like, people are probably gonna start leaving now, so, you know, good luck, everybody, hope everything goes well tomorrow. You know, I'm here for, you know, you can ask questions whenever you want, just message me, and, uh, you know, before the test, then we'll, uh, I'll, I'll help you out. And then, yeah, so good luck tomorrow, okay? Now people. Yes, I hear you now, yeah.
We're just going.
I'm gonna fail, this is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, sorry.
Alright, yeah, so I got, I got a question about that balloon thing that we did, that one example, where there's buoyancy and all that. Uh, so yeah, I was going through the example myself, um, yeah, so, uh, it was part C. Where we were asked to, uh, you know, find a constant, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what I did is, uh, immediately I looked at that, uh, the sum of torques equals the moment of inertia times angular acceleration, right? So I knew that angular acceleration was the second derivative of the displacement over the time, right? So I knew that angular acceleration was the second derivative of the displacement over the time, right?
Second derivative of theta over the time.
Oh, yeah, sorry, theta over time, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so what I did is, I knew that if I were to isolate for that, it would be the sum of torques. Over the uh, moment of inertia equals D squared theta over T squared theta. Right, and we were given the moment of inertia, so if, so I, I had moment of inertia in the denominator. And then in the numerator, I need to have the sum of torques, right, and I knew that the sum of torques was. The magnitude of the force, or the net force, multiply the magnitude of the displacement. Or the distance.
The distance from the pivot.
Exactly, from the pivot, multiplied by sine theta, and I knew that in this example, we're assuming that it's a small angle, so we get rid of the sine, and we just keep the theta.
That's right.
So what kinda threw me off here is when I had to, when I had to find the sum of forces, cuz I knew the distance would, was, was just gonna be length, right? In this case, the pivot is just the length.
One length away, yeah.
Yeah, so the force is what threw me off, because when it came to trying to cancel things out, when I was trying to get to like, match up your example. Uh, what I had was, I had, uh, it, if you go back to the example, you see how we're given that force of buoyancy equals something? I wasn't too sure if I was supposed to use the mass of the air minus the displaced G. Or use the density of air multiplied by its volume times G.
I use the density of air multiplied with the volume times G.
Okay, so if I were to do that, my, my right side of the equation would be exactly that, so the density of air. Multiplied the vol- multiplied by its volume, multiplied by G, and then I also had to subtract it by the force of, of gravity. That, that the mass has, so you know how helium has the mass, so then I mul- subtracted it by the mass of the helium. Times gravity.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I all have that in one bracket, and then I have L on the outside, because, uh, because we're multiplying it by the distance. And then there's theta, it's, it's really, really.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
On my, on my iPad, but, uh, yeah.
I understand, I, I canceled the Ls from the bottom, but, oh, this L should be, why is that?
Yes, one of the Ls, so, yeah, then it was just gonna be left an L in the denominator, right? So mass helium L, okay, square, okay, so can you just write this down for me, if you can? Uh, just like on like a blank piece, I just wanna see where to go from here, okay, so I have it.
Set somewhere here, okay, let's do it here.
Yeah, yeah, so I have equals, so in brackets.
So D squared, D, D squared theta over D T squared equals.
Exactly, so equals the density of air. Multiplied by its volume, multiplied by G, minus the mass of helium.
Yeah, massive helium.
Or, uh, yeah, massive helium multiplied by G, and that's all in a bracket with L and theta on the outside.
Uh, L and theta on the outside, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then in the denominator have mass of helium, uh, multiplied by L squared. So in this case, in this case, the Ls would cancel out, so you're just left with one.
Uh, there should be a negative in the front here, too.
Uh, yeah, sorry, yeah, because that's what the equation that gave us, there's a negative in front of the constant, correct?
Well, that's what we're going for, but did you get a ne- negative in the front here, or no?
I, I kinda completely ignored the minus or the negative sign, I just went on with just calculating like the net force in the displacement.
I, I had that too, that, we did that too, when we were solving this, we didn't have a negative in the front there, when we were supposed to, right, we didn't.
Okay, so, with how it looks right now, what can I cancel out?
Well, so, okay, one L, right, one L can cancel, okay, and then what you do is you turn. You turn the mass of helium into the density of helium times the volume. Right, you can turn that.
Oh, so I'm doing that for both where mass and, mass of helium is.
Then all the Vs will, then all the Vs will cancel.
Okay, and then now you're just left with the density of air multiplied by V.
No, Vs, Vs are gone, Vs are gone now, but they cancel out. Right, so it's gonna be, yeah.
Write down that equation right now, so the mass of helium.
Well, it's actually, it's actually gonna be this right here, it's gonna be this right here. Pretty much this.
Yeah, let me take a picture of that right now.
And then this.
Okay, so the mass of helium equals the density of helium multiplied by its volume.
Exactly, a massive helium.
And I do that for both places, so gravity doesn't cancel out in the denominator, oh, okay. And then my last question is, for part C, it doesn't ask us to find, uh. The omega, so why did you go on to square root it to find omega?
Yeah, you're right, I, I don't know, I don't know, I guess, I just assumed, I guess I just assumed it was asking me for that. Yeah, it doesn't really ask for anything.
Right?
What's my computer doing, why is the keyboard showing up?
Okay, yeah, no, honestly, yeah, that, that clears things up a lot, thank you.
Oh, it says find the constant, there you go, so we found the constant.
So the constant didn't have to be omega, though, right?
Uh, no, no, the omega is the co- is, is the square root of the constant.
Exactly, okay, okay.
Omega is a square root.
Correct answer was not square rooting it.
No, the correct answer is not, this is the correct answer.
Okay, cool.
Right.
Alright then, thank you.
No problem, good luck.
You too.
Thank you.
Adam, can you scroll up to the question?
Adam, I love you.
Love you too, Manuel. Hope everything goes well tomorrow.
Yeah, I do too, for you too, I mean, you're probably goofy, but.
I don't know, we'll see.
Hopefully.
Uh, someone said scroll up, yeah. Okay, sorry, I cut you off, Manuel, yes, someone said scroll up, I don't know where to scroll up to.
Oh, no, 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 could you, could you just scroll down to the, just the question you were just looking at?
Five?
Yeah, this one, just to see, just like to right below C.
Yes, oh, right below C.
Yeah, thank you, perfect.
So Adam, what now, you gonna sleep?
I'm gonna eat food. Kate even brought me a lovely plate of food.
Hey.
That's sick.
I have, very hungry, so I'm ready to eat.
Imagine eating that, wow.
Hi, Kate.
My mouth says hi. Hey. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions, guys, anymore, I'm here for questions.
No, you're good to go, go eat, man, go eat, you're doing this for like three hours or so.
Yeah.